Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, meeting of the Monroe County Council. We are calling this meeting to order. And here in the NatU Hill Room, we have, to my right here, we have councilors Henry Iverson, Decker, Wiltz, and Fidel. And I don't see Councilor Hock on lawn or in the room just yet, but again, we'll announce when she's here. So we have a quorum, so we will go ahead and get started. And for all those that are able to stand, please do so for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Next up is item three, which is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Counsel, does anybody wish to amend tonight's agenda? Yes, Counselor Iverson?
Counsel, I wish to amend the agenda to move all of item 12 to immediately follow item seven. To amend item 12 and add item G, quote, "the reduction of certain capital lines," end quote, and, am I going too fast? And rename the current 12G to 12H. And to table indefinitely item eight, the discussion regarding the minimum cash balance resolution. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions on amending tonight's agenda?
Do I need to reread that slower?
Nope.
If you want us to keep up.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on this? All right. We all got tonight's information in front of, okay. All right, and thanks, council staff, for getting that ready for us. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda as amended, signify by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Next up, this is, before we begin tonight's public hearing tonight, I want to make sure that we are set in the ground for tonight's public hearing. We will open a budget, and anyone who wishes to make a comment will be given the opportunity at that time. Those present here in the NatU Hill Room can come to the lectern here, or if you are participating virtually, you can raise your hand via Teams as well to make a comment. We ask that you are going to limit your items to three minutes, and after your three minutes are up, we will politely say that your time is up, and then we will move on to the next speaker, if there is a next speaker. Here in the NatU Hill Rooms, TSD will have a monitor of the timer, and you will see how much time that you have left as you are chatting. Also via Teams, you will see that countdown clock as well. Following the public comments of each item that we have tonight, the council will have an opportunity to also make a comment on the budget. Once council is finished with comments, the public hearing for that budget will be closed. I want to make this sure that we get that again, so I'm gonna read that one more time for the people in the back. Following the public comments, council will have an opportunity to make the comment on a budget. And after council is done making their comments, that item is closed and we will move further. Does anybody have any questions or comments about those things? Looking to my right, and looking to my left, and seeing none. Next up on our list here, we will have item number four, and we will go ahead and get started with the first reading of public hearing of ordinance 2520, or 25, 2025-34, Waste Reduction District 2026 Budget. So I open the 2026 Waste Reduction District Budget, say that three times fast, and I call on Counselor Wiltz to read the ordinance into the record. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Okay, ordinance 2025-34, be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, for the year ending December 31st, 2026, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, the property tax levies and the property tax rates are herein specified and are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Funds, Fund Code 1215, non-reverting capital projects, adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. Fund 8210, special solid waste management, adopted budget $3,254,620, adopted tax levy $2,355,848, adopted tax rate 0.0248. Fund 8283, solid waste district debt service, adopted budget $308,445, adopted tax levy $217,259, adopted tax rate 0.0023. For a total adopted budget of $3,563,065, adopted tax levy $2,573,107, adopted tax rate 0.0271.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wiltz, for reading that. If we have any members of the public that would like to make comments on this particular item as presented, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak, or you can raise your hand via Teams. Seeing none. And for the record, we do have Counselor Hock that has joined us, all seven council members are present. All right, next up, I will look to any council members to see if anybody has council comment on this budget. Yes, Counselor Wiltz?
I just wanted to note for everyone that the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District is actually now the Monroe County Waste Reduction District, and I was just informed that the ordinance reflects the former name because that's what the Department of Local Government Finance still has on file, so it aligns there. But I thought just to be clear, so everyone knows, they did change their name.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments? Checking my list, checking it twice, okay. All right, without any further comments from council, the public hearing for the 2026 Waste Reduction District Budget is closed. Thank you. All right, next up, I'd like to open the 2026 Monroe Fire Protection District, and I'd like to call on Counselor Decker to read ordinance 2025-35 into the record.
All right. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District for the year ending December 31st, 2026, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as in herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. All right. In Fund Code 0061, rainy day, adopted budget $1,700,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate $0, or pardon me, 0.00. In Fund 8603, special fire general, adopted budget $17,698,155, with an adopted tax levy of $9,790,369, adopted tax rate 0.2577. In 8691, special cume fire, adopted budget $1,401,932, adopted tax levy $1,304,77, for an adopted tax rate of 0.0333, for an adopted budget of $20,808,77, with an adopted tax levy of $11,94,446, and an adopted tax rate of 0.2910.
Much for that. Is there any public comment on this item? Again, if you have public comment on this item, you can come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via Teams, and then we'll come back to council. Wait, this is fast. Just one second, Marty. I just want to make sure that you are here, but before we go back to council comment, we're gonna go to public first, and then we'll come back to council comment.
Why would you do?
Oh, no, no, no. It's okay. It's all right. So not seeing any. Counselor Hock?
Okay. My statement is not just particularly about this budget, but just in general. I thought the new legislation said that when we read this, and of course, this is just the first reading, so we can fix it next time, is that we had to also read in what was presently and what it is being proposed. I believe when you look up the legislation, unless for some reason they took that out, and that's something that we're going to be required to do. But if you can check into that before our next reading, please.
Ms. Tarnikin?
I'm looking right now.
Okay.
Anyway, if I just yell at it, it'll start. Thank you. Do you mean we're supposed to read in the previous budget or the fund balance? What are we?
Well, I don't have it all memorized, but we're supposed to read into what it is for this year and what it's proposed to be for next year, and showing the difference in the tax levy.
Okay.
I don't have it all memorized, but I know it was supposed to be so that we had to acknowledge as we were passing a budget exactly how much the changes were.
Oh, okay.
And hopefully, somebody will check into that. Maybe they took it out of the legislation.
Well, Ms. Tarnikin.
They're looking. I just wanted to get an idea of what you meant, but you mean 2025 numbers compared to 26 numbers.
Right, and just whatever the legislation says. And by the way, just for you folks, I'm not saying that about your proposed budget, I'm just saying in general. I think that says that's what we have to do, that we can fix it before, because this is just the, this is just the first reading, right?
While we're waiting, I'm gonna circle back to public comment. If there's anybody here in the room that wants to make a comment, or you can raise your hand via Teams. Hold, please.
If you want to keep going, I can keep looking, unless you, it might take a minute.
Okay, because we can always come back and reopen if we need to. Okay. All right. So we'll keep going on that regard, so if there isn't anything of council, now we can come back to council to see if council has any other comment on this. And seeing none. The public hearing for the 2026 Monroe Fire Protection District Budget is closed. Okay. Next up, I would like to open the 2026 Monroe County Government Budget, and I would like Counselor Henry to read ordinance 2025-36 into the record.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as a point of clarification, Michelle, so does that include the reading in of the home-ruled funds as well on this document?
Yes, it does.
Buckle up, everybody.
I know.
Here we go.
And seeing.
Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council, let me start over. Ordinance Resolution Number 25, 2025-36. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County for the year ending December 31st, 2026, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4-B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. For Fund Code 0061, rainy day, the adopted budget is $3 million, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For 0101, general, the adopted budget is $57,87,020, the adopted tax levy is $23,939,000, and the adopted tax rate is .02155. For Fund Code 0...
Oh, 0.21.
Thank you. Let me go back, and where did I do that? Point 2155. Great, it's gonna be a long reading, all right. For Fund Code 0102, election registration, the adopted budget is $1,451,190, the adopted tax levy is $335,000, the adopted tax rate is .0030. For Fund Code 0124, 2015 reassessment, the adopted budget is $968,615, the adopted tax levy is $810,000, the adopted tax rate is .0073. For debt service, 0180, Fund Code, the adopted budget is $8,502,000, the adopted tax levy is $8,774,57, and the adopted tax rate is .0791. For self-insurance, Fund Code 0203, the adopted budget is $11,305,500, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00.
Did you say it was for self-insurance?
I did say self-insurance, thank you. For Fund Code 0254, local income tax, the adopted budget is $4,513,360, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For Fund Code 0256, public safety local income tax, the adopted budget is $4,734,976, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For Fund 0256, did I do that already?
Yeah, you did.
Awesome. For 0616, convention and visitors bureau, the adopted budget is $3,216,600, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For Fund Code 0702, highway, the adopted budget is $6,819,837, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For Fund Code 0703, highway special, the adopted budget is $0, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For 0706, Fund Code, local road and street, the adopted budget is $1,555,006, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For Fund Code 0790, cumulative bridge, the adopted budget is $2,932,166, the adopted tax levy is $2,362,187, the adopted tax rate is 0.0213. For county major bridge, Fund Code 0792, the adopted budget is $3,660,059, the adopted tax levy is $3,692,996, the adopted tax rate is 0.0333. For Fund Code 0810, health, the adopted budget is $647,913, the adopted tax levy is $350,000, the adopted tax rate is 0.0032.
Counselor Henry?
Yeah.
Sorry to stop you. I think you said 8010 for health, and it's...
0810.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did it again. 0801.
Yeah.
Great.
Got it.
Okay. For Fund Code 1310, park non-reverting capital, the adopted budget is $100,000, the adopted tax levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For aviation airport, Fund Code 2102, the adopted budget is $1,681,574, the adopted tax levy is $850,000, the adopted tax rate is 0.0077. For Fund Code 2391, cumulative capital development, the adopted budget is $3,878,283, the adopted tax levy is $3,692,996, the adopted tax rate is 0.0333. For Fund Code 2402, economic development, the adopted budget is $0, the adopted levy is $0, the adopted tax rate is 0.00. For these funds, the adopted budget total is $116,054,099. The adopted tax levy is $44,770, sorry, I'll repeat, $44,770,375, with a cumulative tax rate of 0.4037. For the home rule funds not reviewed by the Department of Local Government Finance, Fund Code 9500, extradition and sheriff's assistance, this is cut off, Kim, is that assistance? The adopted budget is $538. 9501, surveyor corner perpetuation is $1049. Fund Code 9502, local public health services is $2,072,287. For Fund Code 9503, Monroe County 911 Fund is $622,294. For Fund Code 9504, Monroe County Convention Center Debt is $0. For Fund Code 9505, auditors and eligible deductions, the amount is $347,103. For Fund Code 9507, community corrections fees, the amount is $275,846. For Fund Code 9508, user fee jury pay, the amount is $36,500. For Fund Code 9509, user fees juvenile probation, the amount is $7,079. For Fund Code 9510, user fees adult probation, the amount is $110,288. For Fund Code 9511, user fees project income/job, the amount is $0. For Fund Code 9512, supplemental PD services, the amount is $925,636. For Fund Code 9513, clerk's record perpetuation, the amount is $151,021, I'm sorry, $151,027. For Fund Code 9514, user fees diversion prosecution, the amount is $102,411. For Fund Code 9515, user fees court alcohol drug, the amount is $266,630. For Fund Code 9516, local health maintenance, the amount is $65,713. For Fund Code 9517, emergency planning right to know, the amount is $25,950. For Fund Code 9519, misdemeanor community corrections, the amount is $128,500. For Fund Code 1, sorry, 9521, alternative dispute resolution, the amount is $17,700. For Fund Code 9522, sales disclosure county share is $66,114. For Fund Code 9523, convention visitor capital improvement and maintenance, the amount is $100,000. For Fund Code 9524, county offender transportation, the amount is $2,500. For the Fund Code 9525, local health department trust, the amount is $61,121. For Fund Code 9526, user fees problem solving courts, the amount is $22,544. For Fund Code 9527, Westside Economic Development, the Richland Township TIF, the amount is $200, sorry, $2,235,287. For Fund Code 9528, 46th Corridor Economic Development, Bloomington Township TIF, the amount is $503,201. For Fund Code 9529, Fullerton Pike Economic Development TIF, the amount is $133,000. For Fund Code 9530, Platt Book, the amount is $500. For Fund Code 9531, Convention Center Operating is $531,300. For Fund Code 9532, user fees cable franchise, the amount is $535,226. For Fund Code 9535, PSAP Interlocal, the amount is $2,781,462. For Fund Code 9543, Public Health Emergency Fund, the amount is $20,000. For Fund Code 9544, Identification Security Protection, the amount is $18,000. For Fund Code 9548, Park Non-Reverting Operating, the amount is $300,000. For Fund Code 9551, Recorder's Records Perpetuation, the amount is $357,714. For Fund Code 9552, Storm Water Management, the amount is $2,390,284. For Fund Code 9559, County Elected Officials Training, the... the amount is $18,000. For Fund Code 9580 Lit Correctional Rehab Facilities, the amount is $594,429. For Fund Code 9588 Federal Award Title IBD, the amount is $58,132. And finally, for Fund Code 9589 Curry Profile TIF, the amount is $25,689 for a total of $16,054.
And you can breathe.
All right. Thank you so much for reading that into the record here. If we have anybody from the public that would like to make public comment on the Monroe County Government's 2026 Budget, again, you can come forward to the lectern here. And then at U-Hill Room, you have up to three minutes. And then you can also raise your hand via Teams. And so I see that we have both. So I'm going to go... I'm going to alternate back and forth. So I'll go to our public commenter here. So again, you can come in, state your name for the record. Again, you'll have up to three minutes. And then I'll go from here in the Nat U-Hill Room to Teams as well. So welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Dr. Lisa Hannah Robinson, here to give comment as a private citizen. In the name of transparency and doing what is right for the health and safety of Monroe County citizens, I am here to remind council that the $3 million shortfall in the county budget should not be remedied by cutting any part of the $1.1 million Health Department operating budget that is tied to the levy. This is wrong. Also wrong is the clawing back of $750,000 of COVID-19 funds. These funds have to be used for capital improvements, and it is not allowed for these funds to revert back to the general fund. Slashing the budget of Monroe County Health Department is dangerous and puts lives at risk. Public health encompasses disease prevention, vaccine administration, and emergency preparedness. You are jeopardizing the health and safety of Monroe County citizens. The tax levy of $350,000 for Monroe County is frankly pathetic and sends the message that health is not a priority of the council. The second message I have tonight is that the cancellation of the IU Health contract with the Monroe County Health Department has nothing to do with Lori Kelly's leadership. Understand that Lori Kelly inherited a department in disarray post-COVID from the prior administration who left abruptly. During COVID, there was complete perceived cooperation between council and health department. In 2020, $4.6 million in COVID funds were dispersed. In total, dispersed. Now, when large sums of money are not flowing through the health department and we are under intense pressure to clean up our books, IU Health, in their own words, desires to now provide public health services to the region, not just Monroe County. And their nonprofit status depends on it. Monroe County was an experiment. Could taxpayer dollars fund contracts to provide public health services? And the answer is yes. So now IU will step away for a period of time, and people will blame this on Lori. As you propose slashing our budget by $1.8 million, this will ensure we will have a very low balance by the year 2027. Then more political games will be played, and someone will step in and say, "We need to save the health of Monroe County and make it a priority." There is no reason why the citizens of Monroe County need to suffer while political games are being played. Your constituents are counting on you to make the right decision. Their lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I see that hand raised via Teams. Again, you can unmute yourself. State your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes. So it looks like we have Jeff McKim.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff McKim, and I want to begin by sincerely thanking you for the incredible amount of work you've put into this year's budget. I know it's been a long and difficult road, and I truly appreciate the seriousness with which you've approached the task of reducing spending. Your ongoing efforts to trim supply budgets and identify smaller savings are worthwhile and appreciated. But unfortunately, those kinds of reductions alone will never be enough to bring this budget into balance. The reality is that Monroe County budget is overwhelmingly driven by personnel costs, not supplies, not services, not capital projects, and not by fund balance policies. The deficit you're facing is almost entirely the result of rising personnel expenses compounded by declining revenues, in part due to the impacts of SCA-1. I do want to acknowledge and commend the progress you've already made in reducing overtime costs. That's a meaningful step in addressing personnel-related spending, and it shows a real willingness to make hard choices. But to truly get a handle on the deficit that's eroding our financial stability, we have to look beyond overtime and squarely at the broader drivers of personnel spending. These include several factors: the growing number of positions funded by the general fund, the generous raise that are already approved and those currently planned, and significant increases in health insurance costs. I understand that eliminating positions is a difficult and painful step, one no one wants to take. But there are a couple of other responsible options before you. First, you can fill positions more slowly through a hiring freeze. I very much hope you approve that measure tonight. Second, you can moderate the cost of living increases planned for next year. While I understand the desire to reward hard-working county employees, Monroe County simply cannot afford to lead the market in raises right now. The most fiscally prudent step would be to pause raises entirely for the moment. But even scaling back to a 1.5% to 2% adjustment would keep us competitive with other public employers while making progress towards closing that gap. And then hopefully, you'll work aggressively with the county commissioners to raise in the escalating costs of the self-insurance plan, which continues to be a major driver of the deficit. In the end, there's no path to fiscal balance that doesn't involve addressing personnel costs, whether in the number of positions, salary levels, or insurance expenses, or some combination of all three. And I know that means there's no path without pain. But I urge you to make the difficult choices now, the ones necessary to stabilize our finances and protect Monroe County's long-term health. Thank you again for your service and for the hard work you've already done.
Thank you. Looks like we have another public commenter here and then at U-Hill Room. Again, you can come forward to the lectern. You'll have up to three minutes. State your name for the record, and you can proceed.
Okay. My name is Janay Trimple, and I'm a former employee of the Monroe County Assessor and Auditor and a resident of Monroe County. I first reported fraud and multiple state code violations that the Monroe County Assessor is committing back in March, nine which are provable with documentation. Tonight's budget is being based upon fraudulent assessed values, fraudulent tax rates, and fraudulent tax levies. I made the auditor aware of this back in March as well, who is required by Indiana State Code to report any reported fraud to the State Board of Accounts, and she did not. I also made some of the members of this council aware, along with the commissioners and the legal department. And according to Monroe County Ordinance 295-3, all board members, committee members, officials, and employees are required to report any and all suspected fraud to the commissioners, who are then required to report that to the State Board of Accounts, and no one has done that. So again, tonight's budget is being based on fraudulent values, and the Monroe County taxpayers are being lied to and taken advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody via Teams that would like to make public comment on Monroe County 2026 budget? Again, you can raise your hand. Or if there's anybody else that's here that would like to make public comment, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U-Hill Room. Last call in the Nat U-Hill Room, and then last call for Teams. And seeing none. Was there a person that... Do you have public comment? I thought I saw somebody's hand raised in the back. Okay. Never mind. I want to make sure I missed anybody. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. So I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anybody. So again, I'm going to go back to council since there is no more public comment. Yes, Counselor Hock.
First of all, I want to say a huge thank you to former council member Jeff McKim, who has continued to make sure that he's done everything possible to review our budgets, just as though he was still sitting here. And his advice is much appreciated. And of course, I miss his presence here. But I'm just going to say it's rare that you see someone who has served as long as he has and just continues to serve. And he's doing that for the benefit of not just everybody here on the council or the people over there, the staff, but for the people of Monroe County. And that's what his goal's always been, to just be a good representative of the entire county. And I just want to make sure we recognize that not all would proceed to spend their personal time continuing to do county business. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Hock, for your comments. Anybody else on this side that has any question or any comments? Seeing no head shakes. I'm going to look over here and see if council has any comments. Speak. Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
I had a question. After this agenda item, we will move into the amended agenda. Will there be public comment on the items, the rest of the items on our agenda?
I mean, if council will or would like to do so? Sure.
I just want to make sure that people know yes or no. I mean, I, you know, because I kind of feel like maybe people would be holding their comment for a specific topic. But if I didn't, you know, I didn't understand, so I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I think, again, that is up to me. And I think, depending on the conversation here, just so we can get through this part here, I'm sure there are lots of comments related to lots of things on our agenda. So I would like to listen. So, but again, do we have any other comments related to 2026 Monroe County budget? All right. Then I will go ahead and... The public comment, or the public hearing, rather, for the 2026 Monroe County Government budget is closed. Okay. Next up is the ordinance for 2025-37 Monroe County's 2026 Salary Ordinance. And I will read that information here. And, wait, here it goes. Okay. An ordinance adopted Monroe County, Indiana, salary schedule and compensation policies for county elected officials, Ordinance 2025-37A. Whereas Indiana Legislature adopted Indiana Code 36-2-3, which established the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal body of Monroe County. And whereas Indiana Code 36-2-5-3 grants the Monroe County Council the power to, one, fix the number of officers, deputies, and other employees; two, describe and classify positions and services; adopt schedules of compensation; and hire or contract with the persons to assist in the development of the schedules of compensation. Whereas Monroe County Council wishes to establish a salary schedule and compensation policies, now it be ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana that this ordinance affixes the salary for elected officials of the county from the period of January 1, 2026 to December 31, 2026, whose salary is comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana Code 36-2-5. These salaries are hereby solidly fixed and follows the maximum level of salary as shown on the elected official salary compensation grid. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and the adherence to the benefit compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of county council that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. For elected officials' time worked on or after January 1, 2026 and prior to midnight December 31, 2026 shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of the Salary Ordinance and Personnel Policy Handbook, regardless of when the payment is issued. Elected officials shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in the elected official compensation grid. The county auditors shall not issue pay warrants for pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the Salary Ordinance. The salary amounts listed are an annual appropriation amount. calculation of the bi-weekly salary rate may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year-end. Elected official base rate schedule. To establish a more equitable system of setting salaries from Monroe County elected officials not set by state, the county council has established within the annual salary ordinance a base rate for elected officials with the schedule of amounts to be applied. The base rate schedule is outlined in Section 1 of the elected official salary grid. For elected officials whose salary is set by state, the state-mandated salaries are amended annually on July 1. The sheriff is excluded from this base rate schedule as his first salary is paid pursuant to Indiana Code 36-2-13-2.5 or Indiana Code 36-2-13-2.8. It is the intent and the direction of the Monroe County Council that all salaries paid by county council which are tied or related to the Monroe County Sheriff as it is mandated by the state of Indiana shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state-mandated salaries on July 1. The county council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county-set salaries, which are generally modified on January 1. Additional information regarding payments of certifications, supplementals, and/or per diems is outlined in Section 2 of the elected official salary grid, presented to the Monroe County Council read and full for the first time on the 30th day of September 2025. Yes. And that's it. Thank you. If... Now we'll go to the member of the public if you have public comment on this item. Again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U-Hill Room. You'll have up to three minutes. Or you can raise your hand via Teams. Okay. And seeing none in the Nat U-Hill Room or hand raised via Teams, we will go back to county council for discussion. So I'll look over here to my left to see if anybody has any comments. Seeing none, I'm going to look to my right. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
In keeping with some of the earlier comments, I think a lot of credit for this elected official base rate schedule goes to Councilmember Wiltz. We worked... She worked really hard on this, and it's proved enduring. So kudos to you for creating this grid and ensuring that we're not having big debates about what we should be paying different elected officials every single year. This has really been a good solution and an enduring one. So thank you.
Councilman Iverson and I worked together on that.
All right. Anybody else on the right here have any question or comments on this item? Yes, Counselor Hock.
Well, this is... We're still working on this. So this still seems to me that for anybody listening or watching paperwork, this is still a work in progress. It appears to me.
Yes, because it's a first reading. Yep. Absolutely correct. Okay. Yes. Counselor Decker.
I would just add, just to clarify and add to what Counselor Hock said, if I could. Everything that we are doing from now until probably everyone hears term is done is going to be a continual work in progress with the way the budgets have shifted. That has always been the rule anyway, that the minute you're done, you're automatically fixing things that got omitted or left off. But with the changes to the state, that means that every county council that, I guess, is paying attention will continuously be in a constant process of trying to figure it out. And we signed up for that. So nothing is ever final till, I guess, your term's done. You can't do anything else about it.
All right. And seeing no other... And seeing no other, yes, Councilor Hawk.
Just to be clear, however, the elected official salaries that we set, we have to have that finalized. We can't be changing it next year because you cannot do that with the elected official salaries. If we should, follow some of the advice that's been given, not just tonight, but in the past, to put a pause on the pay raise or something in order to make these budgets work and wait to see what our revenue situation might change. We can always change that with an additional appropriation or whatever for the county employees. We cannot change it for the elected officials next year during the year, but we certainly can for our county employees.
That is correct, which is why we will have more discussion later. Okay. So, without that being, with that being further, I'm gonna go to item 30, or ordinance 2025-37B, and I'm gonna look to Councilor Fiddle to read into the record.
Just to clarify, this is multiple, multiple pages, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, three, three pages.
Well, that's multiple.
Well, I know, but I, it's like, not the whole thing.
Okay. Well, I'll start, and somebody tell me when to stop if I go too far. Okay. So, the 2026 Monroe County Government Employees Orderance and Ordinance Adopting Monroe County, Indiana Salary Schedule Policies for County Employees, ordinance 2025-37B. Whereas the Indiana Legislature adopted Indiana Code 36-2-3, which established the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal body of Monroe County, and whereas Indiana Code 36-2-5-3 grants the Monroe County Council the power to: One, fix the number of officers, deputies, and other employees; Two, describe and classify positions and services; Three, adopt schedules of compensation; And four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules of compensation. Whereas the Monroe County Council wishes to establish salary schedule and compensation policies. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana that this ordinance affixes the number and salary of employees of the county from the period of January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2026, including all officers, deputies, assistants, and other employees whose salary is comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana Code 36-5. This compensation is limited by the following lines and maximum levels of salary shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the benefit, salary, fiscally related, and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the County Council that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County Government. Any Monroe County employee, including those employees under a contractual agreement or whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guideline, or mandate, shall not receive compensation above the salary grids outlined within this ordinance. The County Auditor shall not issue pay warrants for any payment that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the Salary Ordinance. The annual salary amounts are listed as approximate annual appropriation amount. The calculation of the annual appropriation amount may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year-end. Salaries paid on or after January 1, 2026, and prior to midnight, December 31, 2026, shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of this Salary Ordinance and the Personnel Policy Handbook, regardless of when the work is performed. Specifically, this Salary Ordinance is applicable to dates encompassed within Claim 1, as outlined in the 2026 Pay Schedule. Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook, any item not covered with the Salary Ordinance shall be governed by the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Job description classification definitions. Beginning calendar year 2022, Council approved using the updated classifications and levels for Monroe County Government job descriptions. Compensation levels have been updated using alphanumeric letters A through E. The listing of all classifications is outlined in Section A of the Ordinance Notes. Now, do I read the grid itself? I read the grid itself? Okay. So, this is the elected, 2026 Monroe County Government Elected Official Salary Grid. Account line?
No, I don't need that.
Oh, I don't need?
Page two, sorry.
Sorry.
So, the next verbiage?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted. Well, it was there. And Councilor Fiddle, can you pull your microphone a little closer?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you.
Is that better?
Just because I printed it doesn't mean you read it.
Apparently.
No, that, that was shuffled in there. I apologize.
Full-time hire date compensation step increase schedule. Employees will attain a new salary step increase level on the first day of the pay period, which includes the anniversary of their most recent full-time hire date. The salary step increase schedule is outlined in Section B of the Ordinance Notes. The salary step increase level given to other county employees will not be given to JL/Correktional Center employees covered by the collective bargaining agreement. Knowledge Skills and Abilities, KSA, compensation procedures. Employees who have gone through the review process and approved to receive a Knowledge Skills and Abilities KSA status may receive compensation at either the three- or eight-year level based on the salary grid applicable to the assigned job description, classification, and level. An approved KSA status will remain with the original requesting department for the determined period of time. Departments may request an employee's KSA status be transferred when an applicable position becomes vacant within their department. An employee's KSA status does not automatically transfer with the employee and is subject to review. An employee's approved KSA status only adjusts the salary base rate for that employee. An employee's approved KSA status is not included in the years of service pertaining to longevity and/or vacation calculations. A listing of approved KSA hires with term dates is outlined in Section C of the Ordinance Notes. Longevity scale. Employees who have an official hire date and have begun work with Monroe County Government prior to November 1, 2023, shall, excuse me, shall receive a longevity payment for complete and uninterrupted years of service. These payments will continue until either there is a break in the employee's service or the employee ends employment with the county. An employee who has an official hire date and begun work on or after November 1, 2023, is, excuse me, ineligible to receive longevity payments. To determine longevity, the effective date for longevity is the employee's most recent full-time hire date of the employment with the county. All records must be verified by the Employee Services Department that involve any type of interrupted service. Longevity pay for eligible employees is based on a schedule outlined in Section D of the Ordinance Notes of complete and uninterrupted years of service. A break in service will result in the loss of longevity pay if the rehire date is on or after November 1, 2023. To be eligible for a longevity payout, an employee must still be employed on the date after his or her anniversary date. Elected officials do not receive county longevity pay. Employees whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guidelines, or mandated do not receive county longevity pay. Excuse me, probation officers would be an exception to this rule and would receive longevity. The annual longevity payment given to other county employees will not be given to JL/Correktional Center employees covered by the collective bargaining agreement as longevity is provided for, by the consideration of the collective bargaining agreement. Prior years of service credit. Beginning January 1, 2017, County Council approved allowing complete years only of prior years of service for each term of full-term, or excuse me, of full-time Monroe County Government employment be applied when calculating the rehire of an employee's salary. Step increase level. Months of service, which are less than one full year, shall not be counted nor combined to achieve a complete year of service. For example, an employee who worked for one year and three months shall be credited with one year of service. For probation officers who have transferred from other county positions, the start date for probational salary increases will be governed by the start date certified by the state for that employee's position as a probation officer. For a probation officer who has prior years of service, either in other counties or states, he/she will receive credit for said time as determined by the state for that employee's position as a probation officer. Said start dates and prior years of service will be verified by the probation department, documented in the probation officer's personnel records, and will be tracked by both probation and the council office. The council administrator and personnel administrator must verify all prior Monroe County Government service with employee personnel records and/or with a perf report before being applied to the returning employee's salary. The council administrator will notify the elected official/department head if the prior service credit total has been verified and granted. The council administrator will maintain a spreadsheet of employees with confirmed prior service credit for future use. Any additional information and/or explanation of the Monroe County Government Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies is included in this Salary Ordinance for the purpose of clarification and transparency, see Section Ordinance Notes. Monroe County Policy, or excuse me, Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State Mandated Salaries. Annual salaries for the Monroe County Chief Public Defender, Chief Public, Chief Deputy Public Defender, and Monroe Circuit Court Commissioner are all tied and/or related to the salaries mandated by the State of Indiana for the Monroe Circuit Court Judges, Monroe County Prosecutor, and/or Monroe County Chief Deputy Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July 1. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that all salaries paid by the Monroe County Council which are tied and/or related to the above-mentioned salaries mandated by the State of Indiana shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The Monroe County Council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries, which are generally modified on January 1. Additional detail, including defense services standards, standard G, Supreme Court compensation information, Indiana Code 33-39-6-5, and Indiana Code 36-2-3-17 are incorporated by reference. Monroe County Youth Services Bureau. Due to the requirements established by Indiana Administrative Code for personnel employed at a child caring institution, the Binkley, excuse me, the Binkley House Manager, the Prevention Coordinator, and counselors employed at the Monroe County Youth Services Bureau will be compensated at a minimum of the one-year salary for the PATC classifications. This compensation level meets the current minimum requirements for exempt employees pursuant to the Fair Labor Standards Act. The starting annual salary level for these positions shall be reviewed annually to ensure ongoing compliance with state and federal law and adjusted when necessary. So, then... I gotta turn the page. Presented to the Monroe County Council read in full for the first time on 30th day of September 2025.
Okay, and I'm gonna go to Ms. Terna King. Looks like she was waving me down there.
Sorry. It dawned on me while Council Fiddle was reading that, that we probably should add some sentence to the section about KSA's that indicates that, that process is suspended by council resolution and that council could rescind such accordingly. So, I can add that to the next reading, if you're okay with it.
It should match with what we're doing, yes.
Yes, the, the KSA pause is already in place. I just think we should acknowledge it in the Salary Ordinance for transparency.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Fiddle, for reading that. So, if we have anybody on the, or members of the public that would like to speak to this item, again, you can raise your hand via Teams, or you could come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room, and you'll have up to three minutes. And seeing none. Are there any questions or comments from council? I'm gonna look to my right and see if anybody has anything. Nope, okay. And looking to my left to see if anybody has anything. Would you have? Okay, seeing none. Then I'd like to remind everybody that the budget ordinances and salary ordinance will now be placed on the October 14, 2025 Agenda for a second reading and vote. So, nothing is set in stone, but we'll see everybody back in a couple of weeks. All right. Next up, since we changed the agenda, we are going to move to our amended items, and Councilor, I'm gonna look to Councilor Iverson for that.
Sure. Council, as a reminder, we amended the agenda today, so I'm gonna start reading item 12 here, particular 12A, which is Fund 1000-0068 County Council Commissioners. Council, I move to amend to open Budget 1000-0068 County General Commissioners and make the following amendments. Increase account line 13,000 commissioner to $69,129. Increase account line 10400 commissioner to $69,129. Increase account line 11012 commissioner to $69,129. Increase account line 18101 FICA to $42,804. And finally, increase account line 18201 perf to $78,417. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and I'm gonna look to Ms. Kimshell for this item.
During our budget session process, this went through. Councilor Fiddle then pointed out that all three of the commissioners' salaries were not increased for the 2026 grid amounts. So, this is correcting those three salaries, which then includes the FICA and the perf amounts for the 2026 budget year.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and thank you to Councilor Fiddle for catching that. Does council have any questions or comments on this item? Yes, Councilor Hawk.
Yes. I understand we, there's a need for making the correction. It does not mean that I will support the Salary Ordinance with this included in here, but we have a lot of work yet to do tonight, so I don't want to weigh in on that now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else over here to my right that has any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna look to my left, seeing if anybody has anything. And seeing none, if public comment, if anybody has public comment on this item, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via Teams. And seeing none, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Councilor Henry?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Fiddle?
Yes.
Motion passage unanimous.
All right, thank you. Next up is item B.
Council, I move to open Fund 1000-003 County General Treasurer and make the following amendments. Reduce account line 30004 repairs, equipment/vehicle to $0, and simultaneously create account line 38010 repair equipment and set it to $600. Second.
All right, Ms. Shell.
Yes, this is one of those cleanup items that we were doing with consolidating account lines. This one was missed, so this is just following the precedent that we've set in other budgets.
Okay, thank you. And looking to my left to see if anybody has any questions on this item? Yes, Councilor Decker.
I only just have a technical suggestion on the technical. Is there any way that we just combine the next two technicals and have Councilor Iverson do that in one heap?
Mine with me.
So, we then get rid of all this house cleaning?
Yep.
Just my, maybe we might do.
Okay. So, you're saying combine?
C with D, and I think that's the last one, but...
Yes.
Yeah.
So, C and D, okay.
Okay.
Yes, Councilor Hawk.
Right, I would like to, before we do the, the item C, I want to make sure that the sheriff understands that because... understands that because there were some of us that thought we ought not to do that. I thought we agreed we weren't, or I see Kim Shell's hand.
Yes. But we are not on that item.
I know, but you were saying put them together.
When we get there, I'll explain it.
Right, right. Yes, we're sent, we can combine those. When we get there, we can definitely do that, because that is also a valid point that we talked about before. So yes, I hear you. All right, but because we are still on item B, does anybody else over here has any questions related to Counselor Iverson's motion? Seeing none. All right, if you have public comment on this item, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, now Counselor Iverson will combine item C and D.
Counsel, I move to open Fund 1000-0005 County General Sheriff and make the following amendments. Reduce Account Line 30025 Maintenance to $0. And simultaneously create Account Line 33050 Service Maintenance/Repair Fleet and set it to $1,000. At the same time, I move to open Fund 1000-0009 County General Prosecutor and make the following amendment. Reduce Account Line 30004 Repairs Equipment/Vehicle to $0.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second, Michelle.
Okay, so with regards to the sheriff's request, I spoke with Chief Deputy Parker. This is an account line that they're using strictly for the deputies. The account line that I believe Counselor Hawke was referring to, it was the maintenance line that's in the jail. That line has not been touched or anything. Deputy Parker said this is fine. We actually reduced it at the last meeting from $5,000 to $1,000, and he was fine with that. And so this is one of, again, this is writing those combination, or, you know, several account lines into one accurate number, so that's where we're at on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And then with regards to the prosecutor one, I'll pull that one up here just for a moment. With that, that account line along with another account line was combined into 38010. So that one was just missed, so it just needed to go to zero, so.
Okay. And Counselor Hawke, since you were, does that answer your question?
Right, I just was concerned about the sheriff.
Okay, all right. That was a similar question I had earlier. So anybody else over here to my right that has any questions or comments? Seeing none. I'm gonna look to my left, see if anybody has anything, sorry. All right, seeing none. If anybody has public comment on these two combined items, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room, or raise your hand via teams. None, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, next up is item E.
Counsel, I move to open Fund 1161-0000 Local Public Health Services and reduce Account Line 10104 Assistant Registrar to zero. Reduce Account Line 18001 Self-Insurance to $264,000. Reduce Account Line 18101 FICA to $75,110. Reduce Account Line 18201 PERF to $139,420. Then, open Fund 1159-000 Health Fund and increase Account Line 10104 Assistant Registrar to $45,318. Reduce Account Line 18001 Self-Insurance to $85,000. Reduce Account Line 18101 FICA to $16,039. And reduce Account Line 18201 PERF to $27,301.
Second.
Okay, Michelle.
Yeah, I screwed that up. Instead of saying reduced in 1159, it should say increase.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Sorry.
Counsel, I move to amend my motion for Fund 1159 to increase those account lines to those amounts. And Madam President, if you want me to re-read it, I can, or if that's sufficient, we can do that.
I think that, yeah, that should be enough.
For me, I think that's okay.
Okay, all right. So any other further discussion on this item? To my right, yes, Counselor Henry?
Madam President, thank you. And, yeah, as one of the council liaisons to the Health Department, I have to admit, I'm at this point lost in the sauce when we get between the movement of positions back and forth, as we've been doing here for, well, the whole year, frankly. Counselor Iverson, I just maybe have a point of information. So remind me which fund we're moving to. Is this out of HFI into county?
That's exactly right. So 1161 is the title's Local Public Health Services, but we commonly refer to that as Health First Indiana. And then 1159 is that general fund, the health fund.
Thank you. Here's my comment, and I'll be brief. So I had the good fortune today of going to some of the Association of Indiana Counties' annual conference. It was in French Lick, and asked in our county council meeting with peers if other counties are experiencing this challenge of how to provide public health services under HFI versus their own local funds. We're not alone, as one would imagine, though, but also intriguingly, there are other counties that don't seem to either acknowledge that this is a problem or they're having issues as people present at their health department, and that may speak to their rural character. You know, of course, counties that are larger seem to be experiencing the diversity of concerns here. But what I walked out of that meeting with was there's still no consensus on how to approach this, and it really is on the state to start providing guidance to our counties about how to provide these services under HFI. I mean, you know, we have this bolus of funding that comes to us to deliver public health services, and it's questioned in a way that we can't really tap it. I think at some point, we're going to have to stop with the ping-ponging, though. We're gonna need to come up with a solution locally that if we wait for Indianapolis to say you can use HFI for this and not for that based on the way the code is passed, we might be in for a long wait, is what I was getting out of our council at AIC today. And so I wanted to say that. I also wanted to say, I know it's not customary to comment on public comment, but we all wear many hats in the community, and when a board of health members speaks in a personal capacity or in a capacity, I guess sometimes I want to drop the Victorian behavior of etiquette in this room and actually get to what's going on. And what's going on is we have a serious challenge in how we deliver public health services in our community with the money we have, but the answer can't be to keep coming back to county health funds to try to do that. We need to figure out a way to use what the state provides us. If this is the temporary solution for now, fine, but I don't think we're done with this. I mean, and so I guess I just, you know, I appreciate yet again us looking at this, but it's not finger-pointing. We are in this together, one government, Health Department, county departments, county council, to try to figure out how to deliver the solutions, but it is not a, it's not a heart issue, it's a head issue. This is math, and there's laws that are preventing us from doing this correctly. So I think we just need to honor that every time. It's nothing personal. This is not our fault that we have to do this, but that's my rant on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yes, Counselor Hawke.
Right, I just wanted to add, I'm on the group of the Indiana County Council Association Legislative Group, and we did make it clear that we support increasing the money for HFI to the extent that the state can, but then you look at what's going on with the state, and they're cutting their budgets 5% and 10%. So I think we should not just count on that being our salvation. We need to just look at what we have now and go from there.
Yep, because if I held my breath waiting on that, I might be six feet under. Okay, looking over here to my left, I'll go to Counselor Deckard, and then I'll go to Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, I appreciate very much this discussion, and I appreciate very much what Counselor Henry said, and that he went down there today to talk amongst our colleagues and try to get a sense of where folks are at. If anyone from the state were watching, and I'm starting to think no one watches, maybe I was wrong, but if they were watching, one thing I would say is there used to be a belief, it was not on my side of the aisle, but back in the day, it was a belief that local government had it pretty close to accurate, and if you kind of kept your ear to it, stepped back just a little bit, local government a lot of times would get it right. One of the things the state could consider is to continuously stop having unfunded mandates where we have to have legal, look at something for 9,000 days, and then health administrators who should be putting shots in places, and people should get their shots in vaccines, right? They would be able to do that versus figure out if they're, if this is that or this is that, but that whole thing is like inverted. And so if I had my druthers, and since the state's not listening, I can say this among friends, I'd send them a bill for all the things that we had to figure out, for all the attorneys in that bench we had to pay, and all the time that I kept people, or we kept people up there in that booth watching us, because we can't afford to do it, and we are actually a county with resources, or some resources, to figure those things out. This is not tenable. We also need legislators to tell us what they think and to be honest about it with us. You're either fixing these things or you're perpetuating these things. There's not Democrat or Republican anymore to me. It's you're either fixing these things or you're perpetuating what makes it worse. So that's my observations on all this, as I start to get fired up again and think of our work ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Wiltz?
Thanks. I want to come back from the forest and actually look at the trees for a second. Because I just want to make sure that I understand what we are doing with this particular move from one line to the other, one fund to the other. We're taking one assistant registrar position, and we're placing them back into the county general funded lines. So that, that person is being paid by what I'm gonna recall, gonna call unrestricted health funds, as opposed to other positions and other assistant registrar positions which are in the restricted funds known as HFI. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So that is telling me that whatever percentage, I don't know how many assistant registrars we have, but we have three. So one-third of our assistant registrar duties are being paid for by unrestricted funds. And as I'm going to interpret that, and, you know, I don't run anything, but I'm going to interpret that, that approximately, or up to, one-third of the folks coming in and needing services don't need to necessarily meet a certain residency mandate. I mean, if we're, I know, I know I'm going, I took it that extra step, I did, I admit that, but I don't know how else or why else we're doing this.
Counselor Henry?
I'm gonna do my level best to try to channel the Board of Health and the Health Administrator as it was explained to Peter, myself, or Counselor Iverson, myself. So you're on the right track with why we're doing this. The why we're doing this is, I think, where Counselor Deckard and I were going toward the state. But here's the issue, right? So HFI being funding core services of public health in our community has done so for a few years now. We were able to put the registrars under that account to do that work, because it was core public health work in a community. The way that the new legislation is working is saying that, and this is why the language that Counselor Iverson read is important, to be able to extend vital record work that may extend beyond the geographic boundaries of Monroe County and the state of Indiana. What does that really mean for citizens? Well, if you were born here and you moved away, and you don't live here anymore, if we're funding that registrar through HFI now after July 1st, they can't work with you. And when they go online to use our online systems, like I think Vital Check is one of those systems, if our registrar is funded by HFI, that's their paycheck, and they get a out-of-county human that even was born here, they, we can't use that dollar amount to fund that labor. So now the result is what Counselor Deckard said, that's the unfunded mandate on Monroe County that once upon a time was considered a core public health service in the state of Indiana, funded by IDOH. That's the mess. I would, I think for me, what I'd like to get to is a place where we get that data that you're asking for. We don't really know yet from the Health Department just how much of their work is out-of-county humans right now, and to get that data is going to take some work. I mean, because we're making a guess here, to provide services, we're saying one out of three can handle the out-of-county people, but we're gonna need to get granular. I'm not sure if that's a 40-hour week yet, I don't think we know that, and hopefully the legislature fixes this before we have to start tabulating by, like, piecework, how many birth and death certificates we're processing here. So it has to come home into the county budget for now as an unfunded mandate. I think that's about as clear as I can make it. I mean, I, yeah.
Thank you for taking us down that trip there. All right, Counsel Iverson, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. My question is for Kim Shell, I think. One of the negative four Bs that we've seen was this 11, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the wrong fund. I retract my statement.
Yep, nope, got my numbers mixed up. Thank you. Okay, so does anybody else have any? Yes, Counselor Hawke.
If we had had the list, here's what needs to be under 1159 period, because we can't put it over in 1161. I think that they thought they were giving us that message, but it was not coming through loud and clear. We just knew they were unhappy. That doesn't fix the situation. So anyway, this, at least this is a step in the right direction. We certainly are not going to say we're not gonna give out birth certificates or death certificates, you know, of course we are. We just have to figure out what, you know, where to put it and get it done.
I think this is the only way we can.
Right.
I mean, legally, until they, until the state decides to change something, it was made clear in that email to us that that is exactly the situation. They are not allowed to do...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We, if we'd had all that information like a long time ago, it saved us a lot of time.
Right, exactly.
Yep. And I'll continue on my Quipper Sandfish hashtag, thanks, Indiana. All right. That being said, because they're making us do with what we have to make do with, and that is the common theme of the night, and the overall theme for me, unfortunately, during this entire budget. So, that being said, if there's any public comment on this item, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, thank you for that. Next up is item F.
Counsel, I move to make the following amendments with regards to the passage of our overtime resolution, which is Resolution 2025-41. There are six of these. Number one, open Fund 1107-0000 Aviation and create account line overtime and set that line to $1. Number two, open Fund 1000-0001 County General Clerk, reduce account line 17101 to $0. Number three, open Fund 1000-0009 County General Prosecutor, reduce account line 17101 to $0. Number four, open Fund 1119-0000 Clerk Perpetuation, reduce the account line 17101 to $0. Number five, open Fund 1155 Extradition Prosecutor, reduce account line 17101 to $0. And finally, number six, open Fund 1215-0062 Election Fund Election Board and reduce the account line 17101 to $0.
Second.
All right, Ms. Shell, what do you have to add to this?
So with regards to the aviation department, there was a discussion with, on the overtime resolution to add them, but there was not a discussion on what to put in as an amount. So I just put the dollar... So I just put the dollar because you can create a line, but if you don't put anything in there, it will not show up into the budget for the next year. So if you're going to move forward with more than a dollar, then I need to also know that so that I can take into consideration FICA and perf. But that will need to be added to that line. At this point, by adding just a dollar, there's no change to FICA or perf. And then the only other one that I want to say that is with regards to the extradition, if you set that one to zero, that wipes that entire budget out. So if she does need to come back, because that's the only thing in there is overtime, FICA and perf. So if you take care of removing all of that, then she would have to come back and ask to have that line created again for 2026. I would recommend just leaving that one as a dollar or something, but you know, that's totally up to you guys. Otherwise that budget will no longer exist for 2026.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Tarnikin.
And to piggyback on what Ms. Shell was just saying, it's fine if you leave the prosecutor's line at a dollar. We'll just have to amend the resolution that you passed because the overtime resolution says all account lines will be zeroed out.
Yeah, I'm going to look to my left here. Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
Sorry, I had a question.
Yeah.
I wasn't here last week. I did watch the meeting, but I'm a little confused about extradition being overtime. Can someone explain to me why that's that? What's that mean? Is it because people are paid overtime when they have to go get people elsewhere? Is that one of those? Okay. I would, interesting. There's no other overtime line in the prosecutor's budget?
Yes, but we have zeroed them out with the ordinance that we passed.
Okay. I'm, okay. I'm trying to keep up, sorry. So all of those were automatically zeroed out from the resolution that you all passed last week?
Correct, yes.
Got it. But this is like, these are bonus?
Well, what happened was the ordinance passed. Then I, in order to, to give you an accurate accounting of what account lines are being zeroed, these are the account lines that need to be zeroed out per your ordinance. So that's why I'm bringing this to you, saying this is what is getting zeroed out as well as, hey, I need to have an account line for aviation with a dollar. And then explain with extradition, if we wipe that out totally, then it's gone.
What is extradition budgeted at now?
$538. So $500 for overtime, $38 for FICA.
And is it specifically called out as an account line in the resolution?
Yes, it's, it's called overtime. The resolution refers to the overtime line.
So any overtime line in, in, on all the funds?
That is correct.
And because it says the word overtime?
That is correct.
I get it. So have we checked with the prosecutor to make sure that they can do what they need to do without overtime? I mean, is there a way to do extradition without overtime? I would think there might be, but I don't know.
Our security is here, so if you'd like to be put on the spot and answer Counselor Wiltz's question? Thank you.
Absolutely. Eric Oliphant, Monroe County Prosecuting Attorney. I appreciate your concern, Ms. Wiltz. I think that we can live without this extradition. We haven't used it in a long time. It's essentially to pay a sheriff's deputies overtime. So actually not even somebody in our department to go fetch somebody, but we typically contract this out. So we don't, we're, we're willing to live with this change. So thank you.
Yes, Counselor Deckard.
One thing I want to make sure of, and this is a theme that I'll come back to a few times tonight. I would like to make sure that as we do these things, we're quantifying roughly some number on this because I don't want us potentially to take action that doesn't turn into actual savings that actually helps the bottom line. I mean, all this can't be just a, an exercise in pain, just have an exercise. I, I do want to get a rough ballpark what that is. I don't know if the auditor's team has thoughts on what these things will do, but I don't want to chop down every tree on the lawn if, if two will get it for me or one. And I know that I'm not going to get it all here, but I just think knowing that running forward will help us a lot.
So are you wanting to know what moving these to all zero is going to cost?
Essentially what benefits this process. I mean, if this is $20.35, I think I used that joke last week, $2.35. That's one thing. If this is another amount, it's another. I just want to make sure that we're not losing that in the process.
If, if you want to give me a recess of about five, six minutes, I can do it quickly.
I don't know that we need to recess, but I, I think us keeping track at some point here.
Okay. Let me, let me do one thing real quick and I'll, I was thinking that the prosecutor's itself.
So just to clarify on number five, the 1155 fund, are we, is that now zero? Did we get back to zero or are we doing the dollar?
It is zero.
Just to show, one of the, one of the reductions is the prosecutor's office. It has $3,000 plus then there's going to be a negative. I'll need to take out $230 in FICA and $426 in perf. So that's $3,656. That's just the one department. So I mean, I would have to check everybody else's, you know, with regards to that.
And I'm going to look over here to my right to see if anybody had any questions on this particular line. I know. I know we're all anxious to get moving, but I want to make sure we are good to go on these. All right. So if there's no further questions or comment from counsel, I'll go to public comment. Again, if you have public comment on this item, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via teams. All right. And seeing none, maybe please have a roll call vote. I had to switch screens.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Great, thank you. And that is all under that particular item. I am going to look at the auditor because before we started our meeting, Ms. Woodruff went and passed around the theme of budget season, which is the four B conversation here and what's, or what lets us know rather, where we are in terms of deficit and whatnot. So I'm going to pass it back over to the auditor before we go into the next item for any updates that she would like to give us on this.
So Financial Director Carly Woodruff is preparing to share her screen and going to go through this with you. She is updated and is ready to speak on it. I'm trying as far as I can. Okay. Are we able to see the screen?
Yes, thank you for zooming in.
Okay. So right now we are roughly at 4.4 million in a deficit. That is looking at a simple calculation. So this takes the entire amount that is anticipated to be received in 2026 and we subtract out the amount that is anticipated to be expended, otherwise known as the budget. This does include that 3 million that is appropriated in rainy day. It also does not include the tax cap impact. Also on this same document, we do a deep dive calculation into all of the levy funds. Where you can see the amount on a fund by fund basis for the levy funds. These also have headers that show what lines we're pulling these from on the four Bs. So if you want to go into the four Bs, you can double check their numbers are correct. We're pretty sure they are, but we always like a good review. And then in addition to that, any funds that aren't displayed in this list can be reviewed in the same method. And if you notice, the levy funds do have a larger deficit than the overall budget.
Okay. All right. Counsel, does anybody have any questions for the auditor's office on this item? I'm going to look to my left here. Yes, Counselor Deckard.
So the one that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the one that we're watching hard is that simple calculation up top that you put that 4.406, 346, that doesn't include anything done tonight, right? So far.
It does not reflect any of tonight's changes.
But theoretically, anything we're doing here starts to move that down, hopefully not up. It's, okay.
Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
I just want to make sure I understood or at least heard you correctly. It does include the rainy day appropriation, which we hope not to have to spend. But it's budgeted and I, I appreciate that. Does, and, but it does not include the tax cap impacts, which forgive me, what, how, how much-ish are we looking at?
That's going to be reflected in column D, so it's roughly 1.757 million.
Okay, thank, oh yeah, thank you.
All right. I'm going to look to my right here to see if anybody has any questions. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
So one of the things that we've been talking a lot about are our minimum fund balances. And if you scroll over just a little bit to the four B line 18, which is the estimated end of year cash for 2026, none of those are negative, which is a good thing. And all of them are within the minimum fund balance. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct.
All right. So in one sense, that big 4.4 million deficit is what we're going after. But in another sense, our four Bs are, are looking pretty good right now and we're within the, the fund balances that we set for ourselves back in June.
Just to remind you, those are the minimum fund balances. The county should never go below. It doesn't mean it would be healthy to stay at that level.
Good clarification.
Yes. Anybody else, Counselor Hawke?
Yes. I'm always concerned when we're talking about just the minimum fund balance because what we really need to be looking at is our revenue for this coming year minus or whatever you have to. We've got a revenue coming in and we've got projected budget. And we're 5 million in the deficit for general. You see, I mean, those are the two lines that you look at. The total revenues and the total expenses. I rounded off the total revenues at about 52 and took that from 57. That comes up about five, the 5 million I was talking about. Two from seven. Trying to make it easy. Each of those is what we ought to be looking at is what is our revenue for this coming year? And what is our expenses that we're approving for the coming year? And everything we go over that, like for general, it's 5 million, we're taking it out of the cash because we're spending down what the reserves would be. So there's been a lot of talk about what the minimum fund balance is, but, but those are things we have to look at to see if we're in deficit.
Did you all have a response to that? I thought, I saw.
She's right.
Carly. Or her, Ms., anybody from the auditor's office?
Yes, if you look at the screen in column I, we went ahead and did the deficit calculation on a fund by fund level and you can see that the general fund does have a 5.146 million deficit as of right now. If I may just add, so through this entire process, we've been showing you, you know, the, the two different methods. The four B goes on a fund by fund basis, which we really want you to dig in and review those. However, this gives you the overall view of the county and the deficit. So then we dialed it back and just showed you the levy funds as well. So maybe more isn't best, but we're trying to give you everything so you can review and just make it make sense, I guess, the way that is best for you.
Yes, Counselor Iverson.
I want to piggyback on something that Counselor Deckard just raised. We're going to be doing a lot of work tonight and that top number for the simplified deficit will change as we work this evening. Is it possible to check back in through, periodically throughout the night?
I'd prefer not to do that. That's how mistakes are made and we, you know, give inaccurate information publicly. So I, we can have that for you tomorrow though.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions on this item as presented to us by the auditor's office? Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
So I've kind of calculated three different ways of looking at it. And I'm not going to share that math because it might be embarrassing. But what I'm seeing is anywhere from 3.1 million to almost 6 million as kind of depending on how you look at it with all these different comments, the deficit that we have to attack.
Yeah, and, and that's totally right. I mean, you can look at it as like all of the funds, which is, you know, the simple calculation. You can look at it a fund by fund basis or just the levy funds. I mean, there's, there's not a wrong way. Not that we present it.
We're done. Yes, Counselor Hawke. Your microphone isn't, it's not picking up.
The green light's on.
Yeah, for some reason it wasn't picking up when you were talking.
Okay. I want to call your attention to the fact that QIM cap is on there. Well, now if it's running in the deficit, remember that's a rate controlled fund. There's a big difference between the rate controlled funds and the levy controlled funds. So whatever that rate, the .0333 brings in for QIM cap, then that's where it's going to go. And, and, and to, and it's, so it's, it's rather confusing to include that as a total of the deficits because then it makes it feel like as if we're in more shape than we are.
Is that in the 4.6 up top? Okay.
Because that's, this is what we're looking at, the four Bs.
Or taxpayer trying to follow that.
Okay. All right. So if we don't have any further questions on this, again, we will probably come back to this as we go through this evening. But I wanted to give an opportunity to the auditor to present that item. Yes.
One final comment. As we go through, if you'd like to pull up a four B and present that, as we're looking at different budgets, we're happy to do that and answer any questions along the way.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda is item G, which is the reduction of capital account lines.
Counsel, I move to reduce the following account lines because they've been moved to the 2025 general obligation bond. In county general fund, 1000-0001 clerk account line. In County General Fund, 1,000-0001 Clerk Account Line 40002 to $0. 1,000-0803 Parks Account Line 40001 to $0. 1,000-0380 Jail Account Line 40001 to $0. In Aviation Fund, 1107-0000, Account Line 40002 to $0. Account Line 40120 to $0. Account Line 40130 to $0. Account Line 4150 to $0. Account Line 41104 to $0. In the Reassessment Fund, 1224-000, Account Line 40003 to $0. It's okay. Account Line 44300 to $0. And lastly, in Motor Vehicle Highway, 1176-0000, Account Line 40001 to $0. Account Line 40002 to $0. 40003 to $0. Account Line 41104 to $0. And finally, Account Line 45310 to $0. Second.
Okay, Michelle, what would you like to add to this?
There was a discussion with the Commissioner's Administrator and the auditor with regards to certain capital lines. Then I received that list, and so, as far as I know, these are, and I confirmed with Angie Purdy, these lines have now been placed into the bond. So, with whatever requests that they were asking, so.
Okay, because it was our understanding that capital, anybody that had capital in their budget line should have, or could have been swept into the GO bonds.
Right, and they, that, I think that, the idea, my understanding was a long time ago that budgets didn't have capital lines, but they've slowly been coming back. There are a few things that she, that did not creep in, I want to say to the bond, because the bond is very specific on what it can take in. So not all capital lines have been removed, just those that are, that can be captured in the bond.
Okay, and so, the other question I have for this before I move on to everybody else, is since that has, then this can play into the deficit, oh heck yeah, okay, okay. So that could come out of our, like, our general, because it's already in there. And so what I'm saying when it comes out is trying to make that lower, that amount lower. Get it, got it, get it, okay. Sounds interesting. And Counsel, again.
I was just gonna say, I do know that, because I looked it up, that for the general fund itself, it was like 75,000 and a dollar, so that, out of those three, three things there.
And a dollar means that somebody had an account line that was, and it wasn't zeroed out. Got it, okay. I'm gonna look over here first, because I thought I saw Counselor hands raised, or Counselor Wiltz in, right? So, Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, so, again, so that I'm catching up maybe from last week. So you said 75,000 dollars is all from the general, and then, like, I'm assuming there were other, it's not, was it all in the general fund?
No, there were just, those three departments were picked up and put, placed into the GO bond.
Okay, so.
If somebody else has a capital line.
This is literally just 75,000 dollars that we're doing?
Yes, for the general fund. But then you had the aviation, which is a levy fund. You have reassessment, which is a levy fund.
Right, okay, but what's the total, then?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, I only was able to pull, because I didn't get this so late in the day.
Okay, right, right, right.
So.
Yes.
Counsel, or during our conversation, we were presented the 2025 GO bond. So I'm more than happy to pass that over to you since you weren't here, so you can make what you can with it.
I would like to look at that, but I, can I ask another question?
Sure.
Sorry. My understanding was that there was already about 6 million in the bond request, is that right?
It wasn't exactly that amount, but it looks like, according to this sheet, it was 5,873,960. But not quite at 6 million, but real close.
Okay.
And that conversation is coming back around on the 14th.
Okay, I, I just am concerned about trying to save money now by spending more money overall, by bonding for so much stuff.
And I see, no, 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 I get, I know, I see Ms. Purdy is here, so, yes.
Yeah, Counselor Iverson asked me to come forward. So, the bond that was presented to you, the 2025 proposed bond, included already these items that you are taking out today. And it also included a street sweeper for stormwater. So the bond, the project list that you saw includes these issues. And what happened, it sounds like, is we failed to tell you guys that they were put into that bond. So there was a kind of a breakdown in, Bree and I thought we had a good thing going, and.
Yes, no, I was just gonna add, I, we presented those in a list of possibilities. And I should have just forwarded the email, it was about as clear as mud, though, so, yes, thank you.
Counselor Iverson?
I have some totals, if you'd like to hear them. For the general fund, it's 75,001, like we said. The aviation fund is 102,000. The reassessment fund is 10,000. And the motor vehicle highway is 5,502. And I'm, so, take those with a grain of salt, as Michelle pointed out, some of those do impact our deficit, and some don't.
All right, anybody else over here have any questions related to this item? All right, last call. All right. All right, so if there is any public comment on this item, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Nighty Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via Teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidle?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, thank you. And before we get into the meat and potatoes of the other parts of our agenda here, I'm gonna ask for us to take a quick recess, a five-minute recess, literally a five-minute recess. So, maybe six, since it's 7:04. All right, so if everybody can come back to the dais at seven, and be ready by 7:10, so that we can move through a packed agenda here, that would be greatly preferred. So again, come back 7:10, and let's get ready to roll. Thank you. We are gonna go ahead and get started, because I said we should start back at 7:10. And it's 7:12, so, but my calculations were two minutes over. All right, so let's get back into this agenda here, and, which is item H, which is the other 2026 budget reviews.
Counsel, I open for discussion, a possible 5% reduction in the supplies category across all funds.
Second.
We got the motion in the second. All right. Yes, Counselor Hawke.
Okay, well, it looks like as if, you know, it looks as, like there'd be a big saving of 5 million, something. But we have to break it down by the funds. Because you can't think you saved 5,000 and fixed your deficit, because that's not correct. So I don't even know which funds are included when it says across all funds. Are they including QIM cap? Are they including tip? Who else included in this?
If I may, I want to make sure I understood the question. Are you looking at the simple calculation, the?
If we're, if we're looking at the total, and it makes it look like as if, oh, well, there's a reduction, 5 million, something, well, we need to know where.
It's the 5% reduction in the amount of 281,733, which that says reduction in the supplies category across all funds.
Okay, no, regardless of the dollar amount, what I'm trying to figure out is which funds, and how much it is for the separate funds. I just looked at number, but.
Yes. And I think Michelle is gonna pull that up, so we can see that on the screen, and for the public to see it as well.
I just did this, like, a little bit ago while everyone was taking a break. Let me see if I can get it any bigger. Okay, so what I did was I ran just a cumulative budget. So for general fund, this is the supplies. General fund has 1,389,297 in supplies. A 5% reduction is 69,465.
Okay, so Counselor Hawke, does that answer your question as to which areas it's coming out of?
Right, I mean, I have other questions, but yes, so it's probably going to be more important when we get to the next ones.
The next one, she said. Yes, I'm gonna go to Counselor Henry, and then Iverson.
Thank you, and, yeah, my question does relate, I think, to all of them, but the line of thinking here. So, is the reduction, the 5% reduction after all the cuts that we've made already, or is it before?
This is all before. I have not changed anything, because, you know, everything was not approved until tonight. So this is all before.
So all the edits we've done over the past three weeks, like, we're presuming?
No, it includes everything up until tonight.
That's what I'm asking. So that, that would infer, then, and again, this first item might be smaller, but when we get to items downwind here, it gets more difficult to say that some departments that have already made the good effort to reduce are gonna get hit again, and other departments that did not make the effort are seeing their first 5% cut. As of this.
Unless we say it goes back to what it was to begin with, and then make the 5% cut.
However, there, I'm sorry, not to overtalk, but I mean, however, on that point, some departments made more significant cuts to begin with, you know, beyond 5%. And so, they would be gaining back, in theory, 45%, where others would be, so I'm just trying to get a sense of the point in time where the cut is happening. It sounds like, Michelle, you said, it's from everything that we've done up to this point, and then 5% on top of that.
Correct.
Okay, that's it, that's all I got right now.
Okay, yes, Counselor Iverson.
And just, we're getting some questions about where we are in the agenda. This is a 5%, is a discussion about a 5% reduction in the supplies category. The next discussion is gonna be services. The discussion after that is capital category, the discussion after that is training and travel. So I just wanna, like, kind of roadmapping for people that we're, we're talking about supplies now, then there'll be another discussion on services, and then there'll be another discussion elsewhere. And then I had a question for what's on the screen.
Yes.
Michelle, what you have on the screen, this 5% reduction, would, would that apply to grant funds or other sources of revenue that come in from outside the county?
No, this is only the funds that counsel is, like, read in tonight's ordinances. So anything that was done, presented to you, this does not include grant funds whatsoever.
Okay.
I'm gonna, before I go back to Counselor Hawke, I'm gonna look over here to my left. Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
I see that Fund 1,000 is, you said the general?
Yes, this is general fund.
Okay, so what's 1107? I don't.
Aviation.
Okay, so they don't really align with the numbers that are on the code.
No, and that's the problem. SBOA and the county, we use fund numbers that we recognize. DLGF has a different set of numbers, so that's why.
I'm not gonna say what I'm thinking. Thank you.
And we, we've complained, I know that a lot of county officials have complained, the auditors, because they, they talk one number, we talk a different one.
Brain can only handle so much.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you've got general, aviation, would you mind telling me the others on there?
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know them all, but I can help you, so. That's fine. 1114 is lit, special purpose. 1119 is clerk perpetuation.
Perpetuation.
That's not clerk perpetuation.
1122 is the community corrections for probation. 1135 is cumulative bridge. 1152 is emergency planning, right to know. 1159 is health. The levy fund.
Uh huh, yeah.
Right, that's one we all know.
Okay.
The next one, too.
1161 is the local public health, HFI. 1168 is local road and street. 1170 is public safety, yes, public safety lit. 1173 is highway, motor vehicle highway restricted. And 1176 is motor vehicle highway. I don't remember 1178. It's a, it's, it's a parks, but I'm not sure which parks. It's either parks operating or parks non-reverting capital. Capital, okay.
What's 1186?
1186, that one is rainy day.
Oh. And, okay, what's 1197?
1197 is stormwater.
I appreciate that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hawke, you had your hand raised, and then I'll go back to Counselor Iverson.
Right, and this, this was just a lot to expect the auditor's office, or counsel's office, to put this together sort of last minute. I did speak with her earlier today, but she already had her hands full. But we need to zero in on the differences in the different funds. Whether or not the reduction there is going to help us meet our deficit goal. But remember, if you change something in stormwater, that's not, that's covered with fees. It's not covered with property tax or income tax, that's, that's a fee-based. Even though it gets billed on their property tax, but it's not a property tax. And then a lot of the ones, the supplies, having to do with the highway, of course, those funds are coming in having to do with the gas tax. of course, those funds are coming in having to do with the gas tax and the wheel tax and whatever. But we've got to watch if we're talking about supplies, does that mean where? So, I mean, I think this is a great thing to look at, but so far, I think the supplies is not as big of an amount that would make a lot of difference. When we move down here in the capital items, then we'll have a lot more to talk about. But whether or not it's moving it from a rate controlled fund and saving money at the levy controlled fund is something we would need to look at.
Yes, Councilor Iverson.
So I don't disagree with that. We want to make sure that our reduction amounts are zeroed in on that deficit, that negative $4.4 million deficit. Tonight's the first reading. We are up against it. We are adopting this budget in two weeks. So we really need to be able to make some hard decisions. And one of the rationales behind doing this, having these discussions, is that if we go line by line in every single budget, it would not only take a long time, but also the savings would not be up to where we needed to be to tackle that budget. So attacking something that we're taking a 5% reduction across a number of funds helps us achieve not only the reduction that we need in the debt, but also we hope that as we're discussing this, that we're not taking a deep cut into all of these services. What we're doing is we're taking as small a slice across the top, a haircut, if you will, at this point into the service or into the supplies, excuse me, such that we can be good fiscal stewards. We completely understand that if departments need to come back and request from council an additional appropriation in the supplies category, then that's what needs to happen. And we are certainly looking forward to that. But the really difficult thing that we are facing at this point is that looming deficit. And it is not in this county's interest that we conclude our business tonight with such a looming deficit.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I don't disagree with what I've heard so far, but I think if we're going to continue the barbershop analogy, we kind of need to think through this a little bit because I wanted to come back to what I said earlier. For the departments that voluntarily took the haircut and made the cuts in their line, right? This is now accidentally setting the buzzer a little low and taking a second cut at the side of their head, right? I mean, it's, so I wonder, and I appreciate that going line by line is also onerous with the timeline, but I'm wondering if there's two other cuts of the data we can see. You know, what does 5% look like before we even touched it, right? And then what, what does 5% look like on the account lines that we haven't touched? Because those are kind of two different takes on it. Because again, I mean, there are departments that did the haircut. I mean, they did the work. And so what we're going to hear next is, well, now I'm basically, you know, at 90% of, I have a 90% cut because we cut 85 and you took five more. They will be here to ask and maybe we will have a lot more business on Tuesday nights of people asking to, you know, get 500 bucks here, 500 bucks there. But I'm wondering, my heartburn is still with the idea of, and honoring the work of department heads and finance officers that really tried. And now it's five more. That's, yeah, that's it.
So to make sure that I understand what you're saying, which I think I do, but I want to clarify. You're basically saying, let's look at a 5% reduction for people who have not made an effort to look at.
That's one dataset, that's one dataset to look at, you know? And then the other dataset would be, well, what if we never touched anything? It was 5% across the board off the initial requests? And what does that look like? Because I'm not sure, I'm not sure 280,000, you know, what north and south of that look like right now. But this could be the median. There might be a better number, that's it, yeah.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Wiltz.
I get what you're saying, that I think this might be too blunt of an instrument. I'm wondering though, because to Councilor Iverson's point, we need to get some stuff done tonight. Can we say 5% across all funds and list the ones that are meaningful? I mean, just from that list, there's lots that just aren't going to impact our budget. And yes, I appreciate that some departments already went through the wringer and gave us their blood. Some were forced to, you know, we came back and took some too. So I get that, but we will deal with that kind of thing case by case. We'll go back. This, I think we need to do something. And I think in the interest of doing something, we just quickly go through that list of the funds and general aviation, health, what else?
The levy funds.
Yeah, the ones that we really have to get it, just like, let's make these about that so that we're not impacting non-reverting funds or fee-based funds or things that aren't going to impact us and will impact operations. That's my suggestion.
All right. Councilor Hock, did I see you had your hand raised?
I just would like to see us move on to these larger amounts because by the time you split up 281,000, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be split up in such little amounts and not even in funds that's going to help us with this reduction we're looking for. So I think it's more important we spend our time discussing this larger amount going on down. It's like almost $3 million, but then we have to see where that's coming from.
I think the same approach could be used though in the subsequent items. If we agree on kind of a philosophy forward, I think that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, so if we put Councilor Wiltz's thought process into moving forward with the other items here, we can kind of, for lack of better words, kill two birds with one stone. Is that?
Yes.
And can I clarify the stone that we're using to kill two birds?
That's so weird, yeah.
It is weird. Michelle, would it be a simplified way of doing this that we could see to just look at the eight levy funds?
I'm getting those numbers, so as soon as she gives me those.
I can't see like the number of fingers going like this on keyboards over at that table is insane.
All right.
I have a good idea, but my, you know, like I said, I don't know them all.
We're in the process of looking at putting that theory to items one, two, and three. Okay.
Now, I just want to say, I did not get a chance during that break to run a, to do the report for the capital. So if you wanted that, the capital numbers, you'll just have to bear with me for a little bit and I would have to pull those up. So, and knowing that, you know, some of those numbers haven't been removed because of tonight's stuff, you know, so those will change.
Okay. So Auditor and Michelle, while you are working on that and trying to get those numbers up, would it behoove you all to like have a little bit of a break to do this type of work? Again, I'm like, we figure this is going to be something, again, as we are doing this on the fly. And again, I'm going to say, as Councilor Hock said earlier, staff was here really late last night and early this morning. And I want to make sure that we are giving people an ample amount of opportunity for doing this on the fly. So I'm going to say we take a quick recess as they are pulling it up, about two minutes. Okay.
Actually, I think I'm ready for the supplies one.
Okay, so no reset, we keeping it rolling. Okay, two, two.
So if you. Okay, not every levy fund has all categories. So for instance, Q cap does not have a supplies land.
The Q cap is a rate controlled fund.
Right. So, and that's, so I'm trying to, let's see. Okay, so what you see on the screen highlighted in yellow are the levy funds? Is Q bridge a levy fund? Rate controlled, sorry. Okay, all right. Yeah.
Where's aviation?
What is the sum of column E?
Oh, sorry. No, it's not. That's because I'm, yeah. There you go.
So that's the total?
That's the total of those five funds.
This is supplies?
This is supplies.
Okay. 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 Y'all got comment over here? Would you like to make? Yeah. I thought somebody had, yeah, 81, 919. Yes, for the supplies in terms of saving with the 5% reduction. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Councilor Iverson?
Counsel, I move to implement a 5% reduction in the supplies category in the levy funds.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any additional comment on this item? Councilor Hock?
Yes. I think what we're going to end up doing here in this particular instance is that they're going to be coming back and asking for additional. So, you know, maybe that's how we plan to spend this next year is try and fix this we're in. But I think that 80 some thousand saved over all of the frozen levy, it's more importantly moved to places that might be larger. And not have to go, I mean, 80,000 is a lot of money to me, folks. I mean, a lot of money. But I'm just looking at all these departments who will probably come back and say, we need those. So I won't be saying that on everything, but just this particular thing.
Understand. Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else have any other, excuse me, additional comments or question on the motion?
Who's seconded? Thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. No additional comment from counsel. If you, I guess I'll go to public comment. If you got public comment on this item, you can come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room. You'll have three minutes. And you can also raise your hand via Teams as well if you are online. So seeing none? All right. May we please have a roll call vote?
And I just want to clarify because I was typing and doing things. So this is a motion for a 5% reduction on the levy funds.
That is correct, just the levy funds. I just heard from someone else, this is just the five levy funds.
Levy fund, okay.
Reduction in supplies.
That's correct.
Not 5%.
Thank you, Councilor Hock. Yes, that is correct.
In the supplies. Thank you. All right. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fiddle?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hock? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, and then next up, we are opening the discussion regarding the 5% reduction in the services category across all funds.
I move to open that discussion.
I concur.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to open up this discussion on this item. Yes, Councilor Iverson?
And I think pursuant to the previous conversation, we should edit that to say again, we should be looking at the five levy funds because that's going to have the most direct impact on the $4.4 million debt that we need to tackle tonight.
I may just make a quick note. Just a few items to consider. We have some service lines that were required to make payments. Like if you think about like debt service, for example, fixed expenses, like utilities and so forth, contracts and contractual obligations. So just a thought. Ms. Turner King?
And I will piggyback on the auditor's thoughts. I would also remind counsel that a lot of our contracts are negotiated for multi-years. So those rates are set. So I think we're, a 5% reduction might put the already in existent contracts potentially in jeopardy.
Okay. So the five, I hear you say 5%. I'm just saying for anybody that's watching, don't at me. But is there, if, if five is a lot, is there another number that could possibly be comfortable for that?
I don't know that I could speak to a number tonight without trying to figure out how many multi-year contracts we have, what the contractual amount for 2026 for those are. So I don't, I don't know that I can give you a number tonight.
Okay. All right, counsel, if anybody has any questions? Yes, Counselor Henry, and then I'll go to Iverson.
Thank you. And yeah, I think picking up on Ms. Turner King's comment, I'm recalling the clerk's budget with how, I think we saw a multi-year contract listed, the entirety of it in one year, right? We did reduce that to the correct amount for this year versus next year. And that is a number that we really can't move anymore because it is the contract. So this one's a little, this is even like, you know, trickier than last time because again, you know, we are looking at now being boxed in with contracts and again, with the services category, departments that have made good faith efforts to cut during our first few weeks. And as the number goes up, you know, as I'm thinking through, the departments again have tried really hard to meet us where we were taking the county with making the cuts to preserve the COLA, which was always the goal. This, again, I mean, as this goes on, I think the spirit of this makes a lot of sense because it's just numbers, right? Take a number, cut 5%. Take a number, cut 5% out, great. We're now bumping into some other challenges here. I just feel compelled to highlight that, thank you.
Yes, Counsel Iverson?
So, later in the agenda, we're going to be talking about exemptions. How do, like, what, what services are exempted from certain reductions? Or what departments are exempted from certain budgets? And here, I think we're starting to get a little bit of a flavor of that. So far, we've heard that multi-year contracts would be impacted by this, and rates that are set by external agencies or companies that we have no control over, that we have to pay anyway, such as whether these lights come on, or the air comes on, might also be exemptions. So, but that eats into the savings we can have too. So, this is tricky, but I, those two areas of exemption start to form in my mind.
Yes, Counsel Hawk?
Right, I'm just thinking, Services contract, doesn't that cover what we, what we have with the interlocal agreement, with the city having to do with animal control?
That is a very good point.
That'd be the...
All of that.
That would be a big one, so forth. So, I mean, I think that the theory of this is good. I think we needed to start it two months ago, so we'd see what we were really doing, and have a list of here service contracts, and that's what's included, and then we'd know what we can reduce and what we can't. We don't have any control over those animals that just show up.
True story. Alright, anybody else over here? Yes, Counselor Deckard?
Well, I appreciate the spirit of it as well, and if any of this were pretty or good, they wouldn't have us doing it. Like, this is, this is awful work, it's awful to figure out. This is probably some of the hardest stuff I've seen since January of 2019, when Counsel Wilson and I came on here. And I hate this, I hate every bit of this, this sucks. I didn't want to do this, didn't want to sign up for it. That said, when I look at this, and I start thinking about this, and this is probably more magnificent of our problems than we've had, where we, literally, the analogy I always use is you're walking towards the door in the, in the dark, and you're trying to grab hands and find the doorknob. My question on this, with that analogy, is are we literally here, would it be more attainable to say that we, alongside our departments in this area, are looking instead of the five, but to do two, or 1.5? And again, much like right now, where you're feeling your way through the dark, trying to find that doorknob to get out of here and on the other side, we would come back in, look at this, realize some of these things that Counselor Iverson's talking about, Counselor Henry's talking about around this, but, but two more attainable perhaps as we do this. When we move on tonight, and we talk about hiring freeze, I'm going to talk hard about counsel saying, in that, here's a goal to do it, because, again, why go through pain if you don't have a number? And it may be that we get to the other side of some of this, and we just say to Indianapolis and our constituents, "I apologize, there is no way to offer things for someone that lets that damn horse out again." The third time this month, and Monroe County's got to go out. There may be something that we can say, "There's no other way to do this, other than to have dollars to do it." And so you get your shots, and so that you know you have the crossing guard. It may be that we say that, but 2%, maybe that brings that in just a little bit, and we roughly together, as a county, try to fill our way towards the door without just completely going out that window instead.
You want to see what 2% looks like?
Yes, please.
Maybe in those areas. To see where it would have... That's I'm saying it wrong?
No. 2% would be 278,000.
Point nine?
The levy funds.
Of the levy funds.
Levies. Go ahead.
We're trying to cover $4.4 million in a deficit. Like, oh man, if we keep lowering these numbers, we're never going to get there. And, and it just, I, I, the complexities are real, this is hard. But at the same time, at some point, I think we need to do the difficult thing tonight, and then work with our department heads to make it right in, in the coming years, where we need to make it right. I, I just, man, I, if we just keep reducing these percentages, we're never going to get to 4.4. Yeah, right, it's five in general, so...
So we're looking at a 278, 196 total, if we did a 2% as opposed to a 2.9 million?
For all.
For all.
That's all.
For all. Right, but the levy fund is the, it was the number that was on the screen.
695 is the 5%.
The 695 is the 5% across...
That's just the levy funds.
Oh.
So, if you, I mean, 5% for all funds is 3 million point six. But for the levy funds only, it's 695,489.
Yeah, Counsel Henry.
Yeah, thank you. So, I'm trying to find a space between Counselor Deckard's good comment about what, what a 2% looks like versus Counselor Iverson's comment, that we, we have a mountain in front of us. You know, in this case, because, yeah, I, I don't know how this would work, but I mean, it may be more of a point of information. Presuming we move forward with it, and we have, two weeks from now, we revisit this. Would it, would it, help us to have the departments report in how the, the impact of this? Because we, one thing we need to understand is the contracts, right? Because like, that, that's like, look, this cannot change, like, we can't cut it, right? And, and to try to get something about those fixed expenses in front of us, that will give us a real number, right? It won't be a kind of the 5% haircut for everybody, but we'll get a real number of what the real reduction is, once we take out the contracts, that we can't change, and other fixed expenses we can't change. Is that, is a point of procedure clear? Because that would, we would vote on it, and then we have two weeks to fix it with what comes back? Or do we hold on it, so we hear back from the departments?
Personally, we probably... I, I guess, you vote now. Potentially, what I'm saying is, not, again, don't at me, I'm just going through all the things here, is, we vote now, and then we potentially could possibly change our mind. Or, if you vote in favor of the 5%, you know, it could fail. That, I, I think we have a lot of possibilities, but I see the auditor has her hand up, and I'm going to go to you. Hey?
So, just one more note, I was just confering with the Commissioner's Administrator, and there, she brought to my attention a few other big-ticket items that would be included in this category. For example, like developmental disability, and that's added back in, we get that back. And so, it's not going to do anything to, to cut that, it's just, you know, less funding that's returned to us, essentially. So, developmental disability, mental health, care for inmates, there's just a lot of big-ticket items that really can't be reduced. So, there are some that can, it's just going to take a lot of filtering and work to get through them.
So when you say that it's going to take a lot of work, and we have two weeks until the 14th, what does that look like for you all?
I think we'd have to partner with the departments and analyze contracts to see, you know, what, what our obligations are, and eliminate those lines that simply can't be reduced at this point. So I...
And you would be confident that you potentially could do that in the next couple of weeks?
We could ask departments to, to reach out and, and give us of, a list of what can and cannot be reduced. We'd have to assume that the information that is being provided is accurate. However, I don't think that we can get through and analyze and audit everything on our own here with your staff table, so... Alright, yes, Counsel Wiltz?
So, I think I mentioned this to you. Hello? I think I'm... Hello? I think I mentioned this earlier. I just think Services is kind of a different animal than Supplies and Capital, because Services is what we do. And, you know, like I said before, there's just a lot of contracts that are already signed, and we're committed. So, I honestly, I say, I am not going to vote for cutting the Services in this manner. I also think it's way too much to ask, to have people analyzing stuff over the next couple of weeks. I think today's the, the end-all, I think we need to get through this. So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to move to Capital and say, "Cut that," and then move on and get into the, the bigger-ticket items that I know are waiting for us at the end of this agenda.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay. Alright, so, do we have a general consensus from counsel right now that Services, or, yes, Services is something that we do not want to touch as of this moment, right now? And we can move forward with other items and reduction in the levy? Speak now forever, hold your peace. Alright, yes, Counsel Iverson?
I disagree. I think we're here to do hard things, and I think that we can come up with exemptions that fit some of the things that we've been talking about. And if we didn't, if we, for whatever reason, didn't come up with an exemption, then that is something that we can, we can address fairly quickly.
So the other thing that I will say to that is, let us maybe put a pin in this, this particular item, and let's move on to other items. And then... I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just table it, right, for now?
Yeah, so I think what we can do is, because we have some other sausage to grind right now. I was, okay, so we got other things that we need to worry about right now. So, maybe let's put a pin in this reduction conversation in Services category, and let's look at some other things, and if need be, we can come back to this item.
Right.
Alright.
Counsel, I move to open a discussion regarding a 5% reduction in the Capital categories across all funds. Or across all levy funds.
Levy.
Levy funds, excuse me, I misspoke, levy funds. The five levy.
Alright, so we got a motion and a second, as an opening discussion of the 5% reduction in the Capital category across all levy funds, keyword levy funds. Alright, counsel, what say you? I'm going to look to Counsel Wiltz, and she says she wants to look at Capital.
Okay, while you guys are talking, while you guys are talking, I did a little report, so...
There are only three. The Health Department doesn't have a capital in the, in that levy fund. So it's General, Aviation, and Reassessment. So that's, and that's all there is, and just know that some of this General is going to go away with regards to...
We did it earlier.
Because, yeah, it, all of that is going to be gone, the 75,000, so that's gone. The Aviation is going to be gone, and the Reassessment is also gone. That's because, see, that, it's Capital, and those were moved into the, to that bond. So we already took care of that. So there's nothing left
Great.
in the levy funds with regards to Capital.
Okay. So, Michelle is saying there's nothing that's left in the levy funds in relation to Capital. And we have General, Aviation, and Reassessment that we can look at, or that would have Capital lines.
No, I mean, that, that's it.
That's it.
Right, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, yeah, so every, so actually, these should all be zero.
Okay.
Because they've already been done.
Yeah.
Alright, um...
Right.
We discussed it.
So there's nothing else to discuss on that item? Okay. Moving on.
Counsel, I move to open a discussion regarding a reduction of Training and Travel lines to $1,000 across all levy funds.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Okay, I'm, I'm going to put myself out there, since I, you know, yes, go ahead.
I forgot to list the exemptions.
Okay, go ahead.
Do, okay. Right now, the exemptions that we have listed are Fund 1217, Elected Official, and Fund 1222, Monroe County, E911.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Henry?
So, so making this as painful as I can this evening, I think I'm just going to say the same thing a little differently. So here's a case where we've had departments make cuts on Training and Travel. Some were surgical, because we understood they weren't traveling across the country or the continent, and it was more a regional conference. But of the ones that are required for Training for the purposes of doing their jobs, right? The certification ones, Plan Department, I'm probably thinking about Sheriff's deputies, where we know that, as their employment, you know, having the trainings for the travel matters. This is another case where a lump cut will definitely put people at the table asking for that, that extra travel to get to their certification conference, right? I'm just raising it, because that's the consequence of the, the bludgeon instead of the scalpel, so that's it.
So, yes, and that's what I was just about to say, before you stepped in here, is understand that we have people that have to have for certification and all the other things. And I already know some people already did, you know, the reduction of Training and Travel. To those people, I greatly appreciate that. We have had, and I think maybe Counsel Hawk had mentioned this, maybe a couple, a few weeks ago, early on, where she had mentioned that other counties had to come toward counsel to get approval. I'm not saying that we have to say that, you know, everybody is cut from going to go do those things. I'm going to say the hard part out loud, I do think that we do have some people that leisurely will go for Training and Travel, and that's not something that is required a part of their job, point-blank period. So if you at me, I'm sorry, that's where we're at. And we got to do the hard stuff, and again, that's what we're saying right now. I, I think, I, I get your point, and that's what I don't want to affect, is anybody that is required to have, you know, yearly, annually, those types of trainings. I think for us, is looking at what we can say we can reduce and put that line item in. And if you are still, if you are, you know, because we, those that are elected, we have the Election Fund, and all the electeds can go into that particular fund and take out of that pool, and their staff can go into what we have line item. But I do like the fact, what Counsel Hawk was saying, is we just need to get a handle on these types of things. And this is a way for us to get a handle on the Training and Travel when it comes to what is a necessity, and what is leisurely travel? What is, you know, us getting out on a cold January day, going out west? Or versus what is something that is really a part of your job, and will make and break your position when you do that? So I will say the hard part out loud, people can send me emails and text messages, that's great. But I am speaking to leisurely and not mandatory training.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Hawk?
Well, I, I thought it was very interesting when other council members throughout the state were saying, "Oh, well, we have them bring all of those projection of what it's going to be per employee that's going, and where does they're going? And is it going, this much for a hotel, this much for whatever? And if they're just going to Las Vegas, because that's a lovely place to go, is there someplace they can get that training closer to home? Because, folks, we're not the only one looking at budgets hard, and we've really got it better than most counties. So, I just think sometimes, if, if the departments know that we're going to see where exactly they're going, and what the cost is, and how many is actually going, they might be thinking, making sure, oh, well, this is... making sure, oh, well, this is going to be open for the council to see every penny and we're going to turn it in. Because otherwise, you hear from the people who've worked in the claims position over the years, you would be surprised where all they're going. And I don't think we should be surprised.
I'm gonna look over here to my left to see if anybody has any discussion on that. None? Yes, Counselor Decker?
I appreciate the tough questions because again, this is what we've been sent to do and to have. I love the, I love the idea around training. We have done for years a lot around training for folks. But we are in awful times and difficult times on, on some of these cuts. And I, the question I always have, and this is always a debate over me, going to county councillor training, which probably if people had to prioritize, they'd say it's the least important of all of those that people go to. But the question that I often look and evaluate that, is that training for my role and what I do, gonna be things I actually need to do my function? Or is it, as I've often noticed, a bunch of people sitting around talking about what's the legislature gonna do and then not really answering any questions? And I think that in the state, a lot of those things are gonna have to be really, really addressed because we, nobody's gonna be able to, I don't know how people are at anything right now. And so I, I like a little bit more leaning in on this to kind of figure it out. Because again, it's, it's, well, let me put it like this, it's these things change or we lose people or what people get. And you need people to offer the services and do those things. And so you, somewhere, somehow, something has to lean in hard. We try, we tried things to figure out things that were alternatives, minimum fund balance discussions, I'm sure nobody wants to hear me talk about anymore. But the reality is those things went in, everybody said, nope, that's not gonna do it, back to the drawing board. And so it's this and a few other artful things where we're gonna have to lean in harder, harder, harder.
Yes, Counselor Wilt?
I believe that you addressed the elected official exemption for that fund being that that's an option for folks to use? Is that what you're saying? It's like because anybody, not anybody, but any department elected?
Any elected official?
I honestly don't see why that should be exempted. Why are we not just applying it to everything? And if an elected official has a required training, we can, they can come to us and ask to use it. Let's just cut it all.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if it's, if it's, I don't know, and then the other one, what is the other one about?
E911.
Yeah?
Mandatory training to be certified in 911 services.
I think I'll add the possible exemption list there. The auditor, the treasurer, the recorder, and clerk are all statutorily required to complete, I think it's 15 training hours the first year and then 40 within the remaining three of their term. They could use the elected officials. Every law enforcement officer has a training requirement. I think it's 24 hours with like a breakdown within firearms, emergency vehicle operations, and defensive tactics, which would include both merit deputies and the jail. And then attorneys have to do six credit hours per year, but 36 within three, that's the one I really should know and I'm blanking, which is sad. Okay. Yeah, and I mean, I'll speak perhaps for the legal department, there's four of us, but you know, we try to go to one training a year and that's like $300 individual person. So if you reduce it to 1,000, there goes the budget.
Um.
I could wait for a minute.
I know, I, we, I kind of wanted to get through some of the other stuff and then I wanted to add public comment, but sure, go ahead, yes.
The attorney that we have to have in law enforcement, one of the things that we try to go beyond that, that's one of the things I've been touched about when you was going to open public session, we're at a point now that we raised it to a certain level. So at one point, it's not gonna cost us down the road. What I mean by that, if you look across the country and, and you look at a police department or county or sheriff's office that something tremendously wrong went wrong and then later was sued and then you had, we had to pay, it was a whole lot more. If you trace it back, it's going to be to training. And for us, that's, that's critical for us to be training because if we don't stay on top of things beyond what, what the attorney just mentioned, the basics, yes, we have to have that. But looking forward, if you go do your own work and go back and look, it's, 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 it's very difficult not to fall into a situation where lack of training will cost you at the end a whole lot more. And the other thing is this, we, we do try our very best to work with the council because I know you're in a very difficult situation, we know this. So in, in, in the sheriff's office, we try to meet you more than halfway. But training is something that we work very hard to get at a level now because one of the traction that we're trying to, trying to change to get people to come to us, obviously won't be a pay increase. I got it, I understand we're on that path. But if we, if we reduce training at our level at this point, we're gonna lose that as well. And I hate for us to digress where we came from to where we are right now because I assure you, a lot of the agents want to come to us because of the training level and the professionalism that we at, at the present time. So I, I do urge you to, to think about that because you might save a little here, but if God forbid, something goes wrong, it's gonna be a whole lot down the road. And the last thing I'll leave with this, I, be respectful of your time and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to say this. The other thing that I, and I mentioned this before, one of the things that I, when I go to bed at night, it worries me drastically, drastically, and I bring it full circle, is God forbid, one day we lose one of our deputies because of lack of training, because we all, so we gotta equip them really well so they can go home each evening. But at the same time, we gotta give them the training that they deserve and need to make it home. So I, 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 I wanted to make sure that I come up here and share that with you because when I saw this, the training part, I get it, I truly understand it, but in this arena for us, it really, truly, truly is a matter of life or death for us because what we do is, 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 is a job that not everybody could do. And we have to have that constant high level training to make sure that our people that work so hard to represent and keep this community very safe at the very edge of the training they receive. So I apologize for walking up, but I felt that as, as you were talking about this topic, I wanted to make sure that, because you're gonna have to make a decision and I know it's gonna be tough, but I want you to be well informed of why is it this is kind of passionate for us as far as training goes? Because God forbid, one day, I don't wanna stand in front of you and say, hey, here we are, and I wanted to avoid this tremendously. So I wanted to be very respectful to you and your time, but I also wanted to give you the actual knowledge, why is it that there are certain things, yes, I get it, it might seem logical to you, but when it comes to our world, it makes a hellacious difference for us that sometimes, God forbid, we not be able to go home. So with that, thank you so much for the patience and I do apologize a lot to come up and talk to you.
Sure, thank you. Since we opened that up, um, we, I guess if there's other electeds that are in the room that would like to speak to this, I know I've heard from it, so please briefly speak to this particular item.
Thank you, Erica Oliphant, Monroe County Prosecuting Attorney. I know some of you heard, heard from me tonight. As Ms. Turner King mentioned, attorneys have to have a minimum of six hours of continuing legal education every year, but the average is 12 hours a year because we have to get 36 in three years. Makes sense, right? The training, the $1,000 would fund one attorney to go to one Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys' Council Conference and get their CLEs for the year. I have 18 deputy prosecutors, so $1,000 gets me one trained person, their minimum amount for, for one year. So, and, and going to Mr. Deckard's point, I know we're worried about people going for fun travel and not practical travel, but when we send people to the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys' Council, we're talking about Indiana statute updates, Indiana legal updates, Indiana law and procedure, and we're sharpening trial skills and getting a lot of really practical, directly applicable skills with those trainings. So they, they are practical trainings. I understand that we're trying to save money in some dark, dark times, but we, we'll be here all the time and frankly, I think we'll probably miss some deadlines where we could get, get them a little cheaper to, they tend to have like escalating fees if you wait to sign up. I would also just like to note, though the vast majority of our training and travel budget does go to training and the associated travel, there is also a component that goes to case pertinent expenses. For example, if we have a witness who lives out of county or out of state, they are entitled by law to have their deposition taken in their county of residence. So we have at least a few times in the last year had to send a deputy prosecutor to another state to take a deposition of a witness. You might be thinking, wouldn't it be wonderful if we did these by Zoom? But unfortunately, we can only do them remotely if we have the consent of defense counsel and that is unfortunately rarely given. So, and, and they would give you a lot of reasons for that, they wanna lay eyes on the witness and see how they're gonna testify at trial to assess the merits of their case, it makes sense. I know my office isn't gonna be the only one in a position to need this training and travel line. I know the public defenders are gonna be similarly situated, you'll probably hear from some others. But I just wanted to make it clear that this is an important line and having us come to council to ask for an appropriation every time is going to be, I think it's gonna cost us money and cause us to blow some deadlines potentially, but it's also just gonna be burdensome for you and me if I'm here all the time. So I do appreciate the time to speak to you, kind of off schedule, thank you.
Thank you. And I see her walking towards us. Welcome.
Hello, Mary Ellen Dekoff, I'm the Presiding Judge in Monroe Circuit Court. I just want to add to what Molly said, what Erica said, what the sheriff said, probation, community corrections, they have to do certified training in so many hours to be able to stay certified, for us to stay certified, and that enables us to get granting, get grant funding, et cetera. Also, judges are required to get 15 hours a year, CLE, and if we don't get it, then we will be suspended from doing our jobs. So it is vital that we have adequate money to be able to do that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor, I'll go, Henry, and then I'll go Iverson.
Thank you. So at this point, I wonder, yeah, if we're considering exemptions in funds, what exemption for non-emergency and non, or the exemption, so, so keeping it for non-emergency, non-required, the $1,000 cut, but for emergency or those that are engaged in emergency services or first response and as a requirement of their work, leaving those alone, what that would look like? But again, this is surgical. Not bludgeoning.
And, oh, yeah, I was gonna, I'll come back to you, I'll go Iverson, and then I'll go Wilt.
So in the previous three items that we discussed, we discussed a percentage decrease, which is equity, right? But here, we're saying, well, no, we're gonna reduce everyone to $1,000, which is equality. So I'm wondering why we went from a percent decrease to a dollar amount here and would we not be better going back to a percent decrease?
Counselor Wilt?
Isn't training and travel part of services anyway? I mean, didn't we already just cut it? Essentially.
No, services, we didn't cut.
We didn't cut services.
Because it was too.
Right.
Yeah.
Training and travel is within the, the service category.
So let's cut, so then, we cut training and travel by a percentage. I don't quite get the equity thing, but, but it does make more sense to say, hey, if, if we've already looked at your budget, because we have, we've looked at all of these budgets and Counselor Henry in particular was very good about hammering on the training and travel lines. So we've, we've made those surgical cuts. If we say, let's cut 5% or whatever someone deems reasonable on this side of the day, I know nothing is reasonable out there and I get that. I think that makes more sense and less of a, less drastic an impact, perhaps, and is more maybe palatable. So like a 5% in training and travel.
So we heard Counselor Wilt's conversation there. Yes, Counselor Iverson?
Well, and I, I like what Counselor Wilt was saying and, and I didn't agree, and the reason is, is when we set the dollar amount, it means we're robbing 17 of 18 attorneys from training. If we decrease it by a percentage amount, we're just, I don't know, we're robbing 5% of each one of them training.
Can I make a couple of other statements? I mean, I know this isn't popular, but there are situations in which your employer doesn't pay for your training, even if it's required for your profession. You know, my husband's a psychologist and when he worked for other places, he didn't, he had to get his own training, you know, to get his continuing education credits. It's just a different paradigm than what some folks might be used to. So I, I don't think it's unprecedented to suggest that we don't pay for everything that everybody needs. If it's a requirement to work in this position in county government, yeah, I, I mean, I, I do training for a living, I'm a trainer, that's what I do. So this hurts my heart, you know? I get it. I also know that our federal government has cut training and travel because that's who I train and we do everything online now. And it's because of this exact situation, you know, it's a lot cheaper to do training online. Is it as effective? Depends on the, depends on the teacher, depends on the subject matter, but.
So Counselor Hawke, just to kind of recap the conversation, we've talked about instead of doing a, a flat line item of the thousand, Counselor Wilt just mentioned doing a percentage like we've done with other things. So the 5% is what you're saying, Counselor Wilt?
I was, yeah.
Okay, so 5% instead of having the flat line of 1,000?
Some might be more, some might be less than 1,000. And I appreciate the last comment you were making, I don't know how long you talked about, but the training that you can get online and folks, there's so much available for us at the county council level and you can go back and get that training and a lot of it is just free coming from the DLGF and shame on us if we don't take advantage of that and our staff. Right now, we had staff went to AIC and that's lovely, but AIC is not really meant for staff, it's meant for the elected officials. So if we're gonna find fault with the other departments or see what, we need to start at home.
Yes, Counselor Fido?
So I wondered, speaking about the online training, I wondered about what happened during COVID, was there an online training mandate then whenever that was all shut down and you couldn't really go anywhere, right? I mean, has there been a past practice of doing online trainings for CEUs or whatever?
Well, you did, it'd be just like getting your real estate training that we're required to take and you have to do so many and you have to answer all the questions. You have to answer all the questions. You can only have so much time to pass it. And you have to, they keep track of it and whether or not you passed and with what credit. I've done a lot of training where you have to verify that you actually did it. And, and they can send you the certificate or they keep track of it.
I'm just trying to figure out if there was a practice before, during COVID or some other time.
Same way, and I was, that's what I was referring to, was real estate. We did before and after, but we had to do that during COVID.
Yeah, thank you.
And what I'm hearing, and I see, just one second. What I'm hearing from those that just spoke to us is maybe our particular type of training is much different than their particular type of training. And they have to go, they might be required to go to a sunny place in December. That sounds so warm right now, you know? But even though that sounds like a, what some might think as a leisurely, and I say that with air quotes again, don't at me. What some might think is a leisurely train and travel is something that is required for your job. And I see some, some nods in the back. Okay, all right. I go to Counselor Henry.
I mean, it's a perception-reality problem. You know, vendors find venues to take people to. You know, I, yeah, but it's what's going on in the box, right? And I, I want to, again, because of the time crunch and things here, I don't want to speculate on when a department head's saying, I need to send my person to a travel, you know, for that training, right? I mean, I'm guessing we can't do small firearms training virtually. That'd be a guess for the sheriff's deputy. I presume, you know, you have to fire on a range if we're doing training somewhere that's not virtual. It's hard to really pick at these bit by bit. But I guess what, what I, what I wanted to say here at this point is, can we get a percentage, what this looks like by percentage instead of the, the dollar amount? So we can actually see a number on screen to say if it, what does 5% look like? Is that something that we can do quickly here? Thank you, thank you, Michelle. The 5% may help us clear this up a little bit, if that's where folks are leaning.
Do you want this just for the levy funds or do you want?
Yes, just levy funds. Otherwise, you're going to be here for 20 minutes.
So I'm going to say this while we're waiting, because it was put on my heart. And I felt like I was thinking this earlier and I've said it to some and I'll say it out loud for the record so people can actually hear. Counselor Deckard said it best earlier this evening. This sucks. For lack of better words, this actually sucks. It sucks that we're sitting here having stress pimples from rubbing our faces and trying to figure out all of these different things and having everybody, you know, say all the things to us. It sucks that we are in this position. And it seems like, you know, due to some other things, we got a couple more years of this lovely budget stuff that we have. This is just the first movie. The sequel and the other part of the trilogy is coming in the next couple of years. So I say all that to say, I feel as, at least for me, being on county council for the past four years, I truly believe that council has really tried to go and do a lot of good things for Monroe County government. And the cheerleader right now, which is all seven of us, is in a really bad situation. And we are trying our best and our hardest, and I was saying another word, but I don't want to have language yelled at me, to the point where this is where we are. So while I hear everybody and I hear all the comments and the phone calls and, and the emails and the texts and all of the above right now, we cannot make everybody happy, but I'm willing to figure out how we can make this work. Because as Counselor Henry said earlier today, and it definitely has been a thought of mine, we are trying to make sure that we retain people, not lose people or doge people. And that is what other government entities are doing right now. We can look up the street to Hamilton County and some other places and they are literally cutting people out of this. So are we trying to, you know, I understand that people are like, oh, this, this amount here, this amount here. These larger amounts hopefully will help eat away at some of this deficit and all the hard, long hours and the sore cheeks in the seat that we have been sitting here for a really long time. Well, I hope to pull out. So that's what I will say to that. Again, we can't make everybody happy, but this is the sucky situation that we're in. And I see Michelle has the, the Excel sheet.
So the total amount of reduction for the levy funds only, doing the training and travel, would be $10,088 if you did a 5% reduction.
Um, yes, Counsel Iverson.
Hello. Counsel, I move to implement a 5% reduction in training and travel lines in the five levy funds as presented on the screen.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second with the 5% reduction. And that amount is $10,088 as opposed to what would have been possible, which was $398,690. All right. Any other questions or comments related to this item? Okay, seeing none. If you have a public comment on this item, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Nightingale Room or you can raise your hand via Teams. And seeing none, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Fio.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
I didn't pick up.
I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Whatever it takes to get this done.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Counsel, I'd like to open for discussion. A reduction of postage lines by, to $500 across in the levy funds. And we might as well edit this to be 5% as well.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. And I see Ms. Turner.
I know you have identified some exemptions there. I think you should maybe consider adding the courts to that exemption, considering they have mailings they have to mail out and the clerk as well.
But, yeah, clerks in court are at it.
I can speak it out into the record.
I was looking at a prior copy.
Okay.
So we got a motion and a second.
Hello, all right. Microphones. Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Is there any other further discussion on this item? I guess if we do, much like we've done before, is there a way that we can see what the 5% looks like as opposed to what was in our agenda? Thank you.
And this is just levy, not all, right? Yeah.
Okay, on the screen, there are only three levy funds, general fund, election and reassessment. So the total reduction at 5% would be $8,640.
Does that have the exemptions in there?
One moment, please.
Well, well, I mean.
Literally, it's, I mean.
It's, it's, no, that's not worth your time. At least in my opinion.
This is looking underneath the couch cushion for something. And a big old budget, this is it. All right, so, okay, we tried. All right. So, yes, Counselor Wilt?
Can we go to the next item?
Yes. Yeah. What is it?
Additional 2026 budget reductions. I would like to discuss longevity and what the impact might be of removing longevity completely. We've already taken the steps to not, you know, to only grandfather end. We no longer offer this benefit to new employees as of sometime in 2023. I know we just read the salary ordinance that described it. My understanding from my notes, which vary in their reliability, is it about a $300,000 plus impact? $300,000, yeah. If, it, it's a bigger chunk than things we've been.
And can I ask, because I'll pull up a report, are you just wanting the levy funds or do you want all funds?
Well, I think this is, this becomes more of an equity issue.
Correct.
Ah, okay. So I would suggest that it's all funds.
Right, but.
Yes.
All right, there you go. Yes, Counselor Hogg.
Well, I understand it should be across all funds so that we're treating all employees equally. But we really need a number to see what we're doing with our deficit.
100%.
And I keep hearing 4,000, whatever. And I just don't understand what, I keep looking at the four Bs and that's what we're going to be voting on is the four Bs. It's $5 million deficit in general alone.
Yep. And we will give Michelle a moment while she pulls that up. And Ms. Gregory has her hand up in the meantime.
I think I have the total amount here for longevity, but I don't have it by levy funds. But the, looks like the total amount would be $341,102.
Say it again for me, please.
$341,102.
Thank you.
This is across the general?
All funds.
Oh, all, all funds.
It'll be less.
That's across all levy funds or across all funds?
That's from the Budget Projection, QMIDAL Budget Report for All Funds Budgeted.
Okay, and I'm going to do levy funds.
$347,000 is what can be saved in levy funds, but.
No.
Across all funds.
Okay.
That's like user fees and MVH and.
Anywhere there's personnel.
Yeah.
And Michelle is working on getting the levy fund total.
And this would end up being a change to our salary ordinance, which.
Have to read.
It, okay.
Yes, Counselor Iverson.
It has been brought to my attention that in certain negotiated contracts, longevity is calculated into those negotiated contracts. So for example, jail. And merit deputies as well?
Nope.
Just, just, just correctional officers?
Yep, yes, just correctional.
Yeah, and it's paid out differently. So it's built in as an increase in their hourly rate.
And so at what? So at what point, if we say we want to treat everybody equally and fairly, which is the reason why it would have gotten in that contract to begin with, it wouldn't have even gotten there for more, then it has to come out from everywhere. And any contract signed is surely subject to the county council approval of paying for whatever the expenses are. I mean, this is a, this conversation nobody wants to have. And to me, it's a lot harder than how much you're going to save on postage.
Yep.
And this is really hitting the people that work for us. But what we're trying to do, or at least I think that's what we're trying to do, is make sure that the people who work for us have stable employment. Is that what we're trying for?
I'm, you know, the reason I bring this up specifically, this particular benefit, and have brought it up every year for the past five years, is because it was pointed out to us that we are one of the only counties that double dips into the concept of longevity. And it's, it's lovely that we've been able to do that. But we offer step increases built into the salary grids. And that is a form of rewarding longevity.
Right. We were, we were told that by WIS many years ago that we should not be doing doubles. And we've been doing that back, I guess, when we could do that. But this is a whole new ballgame, folks.
Yeah, and I mean, that is, that was the motivation behind, okay, let's stop doing it for new hires and it'll phase out over time. It was sort of a compromise. And I like that, but here we are. I just am trying to revisit.
Yes, Michelle.
Across the levy funds, reassessment does not pay out. There's no employees in reassessment. So that's why they're not included. So there's only the four levy funds. So there's a total longevity of 277. longevity of 277,450. And that's the levy funds, whereas Auditor Gregory gave you the total funds.
Yes, or, okay, Counselor Iverson?
I, I think this is one of those things where, if we're gonna do it, we need to rip the Band-Aid off and do it for everyone, because if we just take it out of the, the levy positions, then those who aren't the levy would have the benefit.
Yeah, I think that's a given. I think we wanted to see this number so we know what we're impacting in terms of the apples to apples. But yeah, and, I mean, but it doesn't solve, to Counselor Hawke's point, you know, the contracted folks, and, you know, I mean, I guess we could revisit their, their stuff when it comes back up. I don't necessarily advocate ripping open a contract, yeah.
Ms. Turner King.
As I look at the contract and think about this further, although the jail gets 48 cents per hour, correctional officers get 48 cents per hour as a longevity, unlike other county employees, they don't have a step schedule.
Okay. Yeah.
Counselor Iverson?
Counsel, I move to, I move to set longevity to zero in all county funds.
Okay, when you do that, also, that's gonna affect FICA.
With, oh, yeah, so you're gonna have to calculate that, and I, and we need to exempt the negotiated contracts.
It's, it's not included.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
And should it say all employees? I'm not sure you should say county funds, because whether it's grant, or if it's some kind of fee fund, whatever.
I think it's removing it from the salary ordinance.
Yeah.
And then, defunding all associated accounts.
I consent to all that.
Okay, all right, let me, let me type that all up, so.
Yeah.
Let's bring it back. Um, can we, Counselor Iverson, can you please restate, because I also didn't hear a second? So, please restate what you were saying earlier.
I move to amend the salary ordinance to set longevity lines to zero. Nope, 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 all right.
No, okay, so...
Help me out.
Yes, okay, so what you wanna do is you want to remove longevity from the salary ordinance so that it can't be paid out, and then set all funds across the budgets as well as grants to zero.
So moved. Yeah. Can I get a second?
We need a, a second.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Everybody, um, let's just look over here to the right and see if anybody has any questions or comments. Counselor Hawke?
Yes. This is extremely difficult, because this means that the folks that have been around for years and been good servants to the County of Monroe, they're going, because they get more in longevity than the others. And so, it behooves us to be very cautious when we are working on budgets next year, that we remember them every time we let increases happen, that it's going to affect these same folks. And normally, I wouldn't support it, because we're talking about people who've been here 20 years. And, as a reminder, it hasn't been that long that we added step increases. I can't remember what the, was it like anything over 15 years, started getting step increases that didn't get them before, forget what it was, but there was a cap on step increases, yes.
We're at 25.
Was it just for 25?
Yes.
But, but doesn't mean that we couldn't say we could have a pause on step increases of everything over X, if anybody wanted to think of that. I mean, once we, if we ever get to the point where we can't figure out how we're going to get, because the state will cut us.
Yep.
That is already...
Look like they already did.
Either do it, or they will.
Okay, any other comments over here on this item? Looking to my left, does anybody else have any comments on this item? Okay, is there any public on, public comment on this item? You can come forward to the lectern here in the Natty Hill Room or raise your hand via Teams, and we already have somebody that has raised their hands via Teams, and looks like Mr. McKim. So, unmute yourself, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief here. I can see the argument for getting rid of longevity. We've certainly heard the recommendations from our classification consultants, but I really feel like you're doing this in the wrong order. Why are you talking about cutting people's salaries? And make no mistake that from the perspective of an employee, longevity is salary, before you even discuss cutting the growth of salaries, i.e. the COLA. At this point, you could really cut the COLA, pass the hiring freeze, establish an EDL budget, and call it a day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Easier said than done. So, yes, we appreciate that. I just know for me personally, I'm trying to not touch COLA until it is the absolute last-ditch effort, but I will, that's, that's my personal opinion. Um, all right, any other public comment on this item, please raise your hand, or come to the public, or come to this podium here in the Natty Hill Room. Send on. May we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, is there any other 2026 additional budget reductions that anybody has to talk about? Yes, Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the order of operations here, where we have the additionals that we're discussing, and then we're going back to agenda items where we could talk about some instruments to fix the budget, you know, in terms of the special purpose lit and edit, makes my next item a little difficult unless, unless we can figure out a way to amend the agenda here. But to the public comments point, the Social Security Administration for '26 set the COLA for, the anticipated COLA is somewhere between 2.7 and 2.8%. We started off in a good faith effort to aim for 3% in the COLA. We've had some great difficulty making the cuts to get there. When we look at peer organizations or governments in the county, I believe City of Bloomington is at 2.7 in their budget. It, it, and just trying to get a handle on what the dollar amounts would be unless we're willing to tap other instruments like the special purpose lit or the edit, what would matching our City of Bloomington partners look like for 2.7% COLA for this year? So, it's not a motion, it's more where, where we would be in the salaries if we reduced to, or, you know, the, it, it would be a 2.7% increase for employees this year at the SSA understanding of 2.7% instead of 3. I'm not making the motion, I just wanna see the numbers and what that makes, what that looks like right now.
They win it. Yeah, um, so, yeah, I would definitely like to see the numbers, but I definitely want to tap into that EDL. Let's get lit. Um, so, that, I said it, sorry, it's late. Um, so I, I think that would be a conversation, I'm curious about that, but then I really kinda wanna have a conversation about lit, and then maybe we can circle back to, if, come back...
So, would it be fair to amend the agenda to move on to the, the other items and then, and return to this? I mean, because really, that's procedure.
That's where we're going.
That's where we're, we're headed. Um, and then we can come back to the aim, or we can come back to the 2026, yes. So...
I didn't make a motion. I just had a question.
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item. Eight was tabled, we then moved to number nine, and that is a discussion and possible approval of Resolution 2025-42.
Counselor Wiltz, did you have a question?
I'm so confused.
So, basically, the idea is, Counselor Henry is wanting to possibly look at potentially doing a 2.7 increase to match the, the folks at the City of Bloomington. However, because we have the EDL conversation that is coming up, because we amended the agenda earlier to kinda bounce around, and now we're coming back to this particular item, he wanted to look at the numbers. We might have, depending on the conversation about what we wanna do with EDL, we might not necessarily have to do a COLA decrease of the proposed 3 to a potential lower amount. So, I think that's where, yes.
My question is, then, if we still want to have a further discussion under item eight H6, which is where we are, wouldn't we need to table that so that we can come back to the COLA discussion, because the COLA isn't on the agenda anywhere, right? Or, or is it? And I missed it.
I mean, that's other 2026 budget reductions.
Right, so we need to keep that open. We can't just move on. Am I wrong? Like, isn't there something we have to do to keep that item that open so we can come back to it?
Ms. Turner King, can you help us at the most?
I just wanna make sure we can.
Yeah, so, the idea is, if we wanna come back to the conversa, technically, Counselor Henry's point of reduction is a continuation of where we've been for a really long time, but we are now done with that potentially, and we are now moving back towards item nine, which is the discussion of the potential hiring freeze, the special purpose lit, and the economic development. There could be a possibility that depending on the conversation with EDL, we might not have to tap into a decrease of COLA. So, do we table 2026 reductions, or can we move on and then come back?
I mean, you could table it till later this meet, you could table it till later in the meeting, but if the idea is you want to revisit Counselor Henry's COLA discussion...
I always go back.
He can withdraw the discussion, the, the, opening that discussion now, you could have the edit, and then if Counselor Henry wants to repropose having that discussion, he could do so.
I, I believe my comment was inequently made as a point of information. It was not a discussion.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, it wasn't, there wasn't a motion, there wasn't a second, and so it was just him stating, you know, his, his point of, you know, the reduction of COLA.
I, I think the safest bet is to probably move to table further discussion on the 2026 budget until after whatever other items you wanna discuss.
So moved.
Well, you probably should identify what other items you wanna discuss.
Counsel, yes, Counselor Deckard.
Madam President, I move that we table additional budget discussions until after we've had a discussion on, and I would, if I might recommend, the Hiring Freeze Resolution, item nine, discussion regarding Economic Development Lit, item 11, and then we could come back to the additional budget discussion.
Okay, somebody seconds?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to move around. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Counselor Fidel?
We're leaving off number 10, the Lit Special Purportat, Purpose Tax?
My inclination on the motion was it comes after the additional budget discussion, because it's not directly compressing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still having the discussion?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, that's been removed.
All those in favor of adopting what Counselor Deckard said signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries, so let's get into the conversation of item number nine.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion possible approval of Resolution 2025-42, a resolution to temporarily freeze the hiring of full and part-time staff.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, Ms. Turner King.
So, I, in your packet, and I could try to get it up on the screen, but I would have to join the meeting, um, is the amended version of the hiring ordinance from last week. Yesterday, I sent you a packet that included all of the departmental responses that I got in response to an email that I sent asking for information, and then I included in the email to you seven potential talking points that you probably would want to consider, and I don't know if you want me to tick through them individually, or, or how you would like to have this discussion.
Open it up. So, um, is there a way that we can have, well, you're trying to join the meeting, so you can post or share your screen. In the meantime, as Ms. Turner King is working on that, since the motion is open to have the discussion here, what is the council's discussion on this item? I'll just go down the trial, or the lawn, Counselor Iverson, and then I'll go down the lawn here.
So, from my comments on this topic last week, or, yeah, it was last week, the, the issue of exemptions still is, is a tricky one here, and in the seven points that were, or six points that were included, I, I think that's probably what we need to tackle, should this, should this pass, that procedure of what, what should be implemented to assist us in determining what positions may qualify for an exemption, and then should we repurpose PAC to be a body that hears those, or does that come directly to council? Should we use a process that's similar to how we fill vacancies? You know, so I think a lot of that work needs to be done, and, and I, I think that's pretty paramount, because I, I did hear from a former council member who shall remain nameless, who said that when this happened during the Great Recession, that there were quite a few folks, departments who came forward wanting to have their vacancies filled, and council approved every single one of them. So, I think we need to learn from that history, and acknowledge that history, and get to the point where we are fairly evaluating department needs to fill vacancies.
I'm, I'm gonna come back over here, so I'm gonna go, Counselor Hawke, and then I'm gonna come back to Deckard and Wiltz. Yes?
I'd like to make it really quite simple. It's a hiring freeze, except for the jail and the youth services shelter, because they have to have so many people on staff, because that's a 24-hour operation, and then, anything beyond that, then, you know, everybody's gonna yell and scream, they're gonna cry a lot harder when they don't get the raise, and no, I don't think you can afford a 3% raise.
Counselor Deckard?
Thank you very much. This one has been particularly on my mind. By the way, doing anything affecting employees coming in, going out, and what they get paid is always hard, the hardest thing for me, and this, this year absolutely sucks, to repeat Counselor Crossley speaking, repeating me. But when I look at this, I, I believe what I said, I think, earlier in the meeting, is that if you're looking at this, the council does have to make determinations on that, and go through that with the department head, which really is a time suck for everybody, and I get it. That said, when we did do this before, council generally said, yep, 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 over and over, because the revenues were there. This time, the revenues are not there, and it's problematic. And so, when I look at this, I, I see this as an opportunity for all of us to kinda go through that together. I also think that if you're gonna go through the pain of this process, that the council should be realistic about why you're going through the pain, and it's about money, and, and, and having some control over the growth of the county, because the state's revenues are not growing with us. That has dramatically changed. So, when I look at this resolution, it is exceedingly hard for me to vote... So when I look at this resolution, it is exceedingly hard for me to vote yes on this. But if I do vote yes, and I will tonight, I'm saying in my mind, as one counselor, I would like to see this turn into a cost saving for the county that we manage with departments as best as we can, and that it has a quantifiable amount to it. And that is not easy, but for me, I think the council has to set a target amount that makes this worthwhile of preserving a COLA, preserving employment for those who are here and remaining here, and preserving services for taxpayers. To me, it would be worthwhile for the county to approach this with the mind that we would want this to come at a significant benefit to the county, about $1 million. I'm just going to be real honest on that, because what we're facing now is battling back from a deficit that is in millions, not minutes. It's millions, literally. We've heard tonight a lot of things about everything that is important, and I agree. And back in the day, when I was more Good Time Charlie in this role, and we had the revenues, we could support a lot. But now, we're literally trying to save the ship from taking on water that the state says, well, now that's the only amount of water you can. So to me, that's the criteria. I have to have a demonstrated significant, significant need for this county to fill it. Otherwise, we have to fudge it along, and that sucks. But this all is going to suck if we don't do it right.
Counselor Wiltz.
I agree that this is necessary, and this is difficult. And I think also, to Counselor Hawke's point, I think we can simplify this a great deal. It occurs to me that it gets very mired and mucky when council as a body has to make thumbs-up, thumbs-down decisions on departmental business of this nature. I mean, do you get, you know, is your position worth this or that? My suggestion would be that there's a hiring freeze, and if a department head feels that that particular position must, is integral to functioning as a department or an office, then that department head can find the equivalent FTE to remove from their office or department if they want to fill the position that has been vacant, so that you've got some parity there. You know, if they want to, and it might be FTE, it might be salary equivalent. You know, we could work that out exactly, but let the department head determine, make that hard decision, frankly, rather than coming to us with, you know, I mean, we would have to be involved, but rather than making us suss out the value of X position in this department versus Y position in that department and all of that. I agree with setting a goal for saving money. I think thinking about this in real terms is important, but the practicality of it is, you know, we have to have a certain number of people at YSB. I do remember that. And I think obviously there's some public safety issues that maybe warrant either exemption or discussion. But ultimately, I would like to put as much decision-making in the hands of the department heads while still freezing the overall addition, you know, of or replacement of FTE.
Yes, Counselor Fidel.
So could you, with that in mind, could you freeze the total FTE in each department and let the department do the work of deciding what that's going to be?
Except that not all FTEs are equal.
Correct.
Because of differing salaries. So I kind of backed off of FTE as the unit, and maybe, and dollars ultimately have to be the unit.
I see.
If it's about saving money.
All right. And I guess my other question is with this, because we have people that will come, I just want to get a clarification, Ms. Turner-King. Does this include grant positions?
That would be the first talking point that I suggested you guys talk through. So the first talking point would, should grant positions be handled differently? If so, how? Should departments be allowed to move personnel into grant positions? I think in the packet that I sent you from departmental responses, this was one of probation's real concerns, and I could pull up the responses if you want, but I mean...
What was the general consensus? Like, yeah.
Related to specifically grants or overall?
The grant.
I think the general consensus was there is a fear if they do not provide the grant services or have the employees to provide the grant services, then they could be in jeopardy of losing the grant funding.
Understandable. Okay. So the first talking point of the day for this resolution is, would we make this grant positions exempt from this freeze? And I would think that we would say yes to that, but the floor is open. So, you know, anybody that would like to make a comment on this, please do. And Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I'm just reminding you, the trouble we're in right now is because grant dollars went away, employees were moved to grant dollars, and now they're being moved back to general, and it isn't like as if we, I mean, now that exploded, the number of employees in County General, as well as the number that was being covered under the self-fund insurance. So I mean, just be careful what we're doing with grants.
Yes, Counselor Iverson.
In reading what the probation department wrote, it's actually the other way, where if a position is vacant inside of a grant, then we may not be able to fulfill the obligations of the grant, and then we will lose that grant. And examples of grants that we currently have that we could lose include problem-solving court, pre-trial services program, juvenile detention alternatives, and community corrections programs. We're talking about drug testing, JDAI, mental health court, reentry court. I mean, so I would personally be a fan of excluding those.
Yes, Counselor Henry.
I think it is worth maybe mudstomping Counselor Hawke's comment, right? I mean, we, of course, if we have grant funding coming into the county, and that is a contained bucket of money that is tapped for that FTE, that's funded. We are, but we are, you know, we have had some challenges with the way, we've talked about HFI especially, about moving people out of a funded program into County General, or the county with the Health Fund, right? And it is maybe reasserting or being very clear that if the grant goes away, the person goes away, which I think we've had some movement around. That was definitely not the case when I was employee of the county, like 18 years ago, right? I mean, I understood that the grant went away, so did I. Now that position's funded differently. We're funding it out of COAG, I think, right now. But I don't think we need to put it in the language of the resolution, but I mean, it should be abundantly clear that if you're funded on grants, it's as good as the grant. We can't keep bringing people in at this point. Yeah, we, and I think maybe, maybe I'll make it, say it this way. I think the hardest thing lately, or at least from my seat, has been when we do have department heads come to us and they plead their case about the value of the program, the necessity of what they do in the community. We know that. This is dollars. I mean, we literally don't have the money tree behind the desk here. I mean, this is not, there's a lot of pain here. So it's not coming from a place of malice to cut these programs. We literally don't have the resource at this point.
Totally agree. All right, looking over here to my left, does anybody have any questions or comments on this particular resolution here?
Go ahead.
My question is, are the language that grant positions are exempted from the hiring freeze, is that what I'm hearing? And if, and what's the argument against that, I guess? I would like to hear that again, sorry.
Go ahead.
But it's the FICA and PERF related to the grant position, if we actually can fund it or not, right? I mean, is the grant funding the whole FTE with the wraparound, or is it just salary? And I think that's what we bumped into, right? So there's a condition on that, I think. That's one way to think about it. Like, is it totally funded or half-funded? You know, and if it's half-funded, then we are cutting into other things. I think that, now, of course, I don't have those off the top of my head right now, but that would be one condition, right? We can't do half a thing. It has to be a fully-contained funded thing.
So for your, so for that reason, are you saying that's why we don't add that into the language?
I think we have to add the language that says that what grant-funded means fully-funded. It doesn't mean partially-funded.
I would agree.
Or else we're partially eating into the general.
I think we just need to make it explicitly clear for people, you know, how we are looking at that. Yes, Counselor Hawke.
Well, if we would ever really adopt what had for years been, the plan was when the grant went away, the position was dropped, and they were supposed to be notified, this is a grant position, and, you know, it's for two years, or one year, or whatever it is. But what has happened is the grant's gone away, but the person's still there, and County General's picking up the rest of it. So while I love grants, because they've let us operate a lot better than a lot of counties, we can no longer afford to take the grants that run out of money and put it over in general. Now, if we would vote on that, and I knew that's what we were going to do, I could support that part, but so far, that's not what we've done.
So my understanding is that every employee's job description that they sign...
I agree with what you're saying.
Okay, every employee signs something that says, you know, if the funding goes away, this job is no longer here for me.
I know, but we don't honor that. We have not been honoring that.
We found, we found good reason not to. There was revenue, we debated it, you raised those points every time, I remember. Even when we added that language to every job, I remember I took hell from people's packed chairs, probably four or five years ago, that we put that mean language in there. But we did, and we debated it. Now we're in a different time where revenue has shifted. We have looked up, and we see our feet up in the air above us, and we're trying to write that so that we're not on the ground anymore. So it's, this is, you know, we do, just like everyone says when they run, you debate the values of your community. Most of those grants people went after because we value it. We were able to fund that value. Now, those things shift and change. And we'll debate this all again in five years, 10 years, maybe 20. It'll go the other way, maybe, hopefully, please God. But people come in here and say, I don't know why you'd ever cut that, and they'll laugh about us.
Yes, Counselor Iverson.
So I think some of this blends into the next talking point, which is, should the hiring freeze be applicable to all departments? Which is something that I think is an interesting point, that if we don't exempt any department, then if we don't exempt any department, then we simply have them follow the same procedure, and maybe the, or maybe the exemption is that they just don't have to wait to hire. So...
I feel like I'm... I'm reading. Sorry, I'm kind of going back to the email that we got sent. I guess the biggest thing is, can we just simplify this entire thing? And how we can, I see the six different talking points here, but are we getting into the really nitty-gritty, willy-nilly of this? Or are we just truly saying, this is a real hiring freeze, and we are saying that we have grant positions that are exempt from this? And if, you know, that grant goes away, then unfortunately, we cannot absorb that into the County General, and then that position goes away. That's what I'm trying to look at and simplify. I don't want us to complicate this, but that's what I'm thinking. Okay, hey, hands over here. Yes.
I think one way you can simplify it is kind of within 6B of the talking point that I pointed out, and if the process is, it's a hiring freeze, it applies to everyone, and then the procedure becomes departments who are wanting to submit an exemption, they follow the same process like we do for our vacancies now, right? So hiring freeze applies to everybody. If department wants an exemption, they email council office. Council has 48 hours to respond, to determine if they want to talk about it as a whole council, to consider the exemption. And if no one responds within 48 hours, a hiring freeze is a hiring freeze. The answer is no.
No. No, you don't get to hire.
Correct.
The default is freeze.
The default is no.
Okay.
You don't get to hire unless council wants to consider it at a meeting, and then council can decide, okay, this is a grant position, we want to talk about it. This is, you know, a position at YSB, we want to talk about it. And then, so then you're not talking about every, you're not talking about every position that's being requested, because the default is no.
The default is no until we get the email and somebody objects.
Right, so somebody objects, and that means it'll go...
Right, and then that brings, just like we've done earlier this year with some other stuff. Got it. Okay. Does anybody else over here have any question, more questions to what? Yeah, okay. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
I wanted to clarify in paragraph one, if you could scroll down, or whoever's got it shared.
That's me.
Okay. In the sentence right before the red, it says that that must occur during a notice public meeting?
Now, the procedure that I just described is not the procedure reflected in this ordinance. This was the draft from last week. Those were just suggested considering points, maybe. So if you want to do that, then I have to amend the resolution.
Counselor Hawke, did you have your hand?
Hi, everybody. Staring at their 100 emails that we get every day, and so it's really easy to miss one. And I know when we first started this, when FSG said, put a pause on everything, so I started saying, no. Well, what did we get? We got everybody who, that mean Marty Hawke, she won't give me that job. And let me tell you, somebody else had better be the mean whoever it is.
But the default is the freezing.
It's opposite.
It's opposite for this.
Yeah. The default would be don't hire.
If we don't say anything, it's frozen, they...
Opposite. Everybody's a quiet Marty.
Basically, we default, we adopt the, or we, you know, adopt this, the default is no, you do not get to do that.
Okay, so if you see it, and you want to make an exception for them, then you better say then.
Yes.
So it's exactly opposite of what you're saying. Okay, well, I'm glad everybody else caught that, but...
Yep. So we're, again, that's the simplifying method of, and keeping it, the KISS method, is making sure, like, we just say no, and then if somebody wants to continue to, or to push for it and advocate for it, then much like we have right now, they could send an email, somebody can object, and then wham-bam, it's on our agenda.
Okay.
And then they have to state their facts.
I do think that we need to make absolutely certain that we don't slow down the hiring of, to making sure we're full staff at the jail and full staff at the youth shelter, because we have no, no choice. We can't shut down the jail, and you can't shut down the youth shelter.
Sure.
Or at least, I don't think we should.
I think...
So they should be... So, they should be exempt.
I don't think anybody up here wants to shut down those two things. So, okay, so we heard that. Does anybody else have any questions or comments, um, for this? I feel like we still got a lot to tackle, and we've been on this for a while, and we've had this, um, on the forefront here for a while now. So, yes, count, somebody?
Are we, are we, I'd like to talk about another talking point that was, okay. Part-time employees, are we freezing? Are we free, specifically, are we saying there's no summer camp employees for next year?
Right, this is a parks thing.
I mean, cuz the parks do seasonal hires for that. So, they hire maybe the same people, but they're let go every fall, it's a seasonal thing.
So, would we be saying our seasonal staff be exempt from this, is that...
Asking, you know?
Okay. Yes, Counselor Decker.
To me, that, and that's in the budget now, right? All right, to me, that's in the budget now, that is something that comes on in a season. And to me, that would be exempt, because it would be ramping up and on, and is expected that way.
I think we would have to be explicit, but yes, I kinda, you know. I, in, unless we're in such dire straits that we are cutting that programming...
Which is a whole different discussion.
I think, is a whole different discussion.
Okay?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Henry.
Kate took the wheel. I, 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 I think what maybe a lot of these points can be summed up with is the idea that, you know, things are hard, this is different, departments are gonna have to come make their case in this room. And, and there are going to be exceptions like this. I mean, one of the part-time mentions is this idea of the election workers. It's like, well, of course, we're gonna have an election. Of course, there's going to be people hired. The issue is that, that department head's gonna have to come in here and make that case. And, and, and we're gonna have to do a lot more of this, of adjudicating the case against the fiscal constraints of the county, not the mission, not the value, not the, the individuals, not the longevity, the dollars. So, I guess on all of these, I'm at a point where, you know, you gotta come here. That's really what this is about for the next year. It's, it is a new world, you have to come here to make your case.
And that's the simple method? So, that's it? So, again, I think going back to the earlier point is just keeping this simple. That is a freeze. Obviously, I think we all know that there are things that would be exempt from that, and so they would just come in and state the case and go from there. Yes, Counselor Iverson?
For the untold number of county employees and department heads watching right now, what would be the next steps in terms of drafting or making edits to this document?
Well, I can edit this on, um, live, if you have suggestions on language you wanna put it in there. If you are wanting me to go back and incorporate all of these ideas, then I am not gonna do that on, on live. So, this isn't either, I guess, provide me edits that you want me to make, and then consider passing it tonight, or give me time to edit it.
My gut says that there was enough here that we do the latter.
Any have any objections of doing this on the fly right now? And we can always go back and, and always open this back up for discussion. If we go through this and we have a, a moment, we can always come back and open this up and amend it later. Yes, Counselor.
So, what's the critical path preventing voting now? Because if we don't, we have two more weeks, right? Or we go, we just continue with hiring? So, I'm just trying to get to the critical path of what is the blocker that gets us to vote? And if we have to amend, we can, is it really, and, and maybe it's, and I don't mean to be that shrill about it, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what, what is really in the way here that can't be amended in a future resolution?
I just think that it's just to keep a simple method. We put in, um, you know, look at what we have on the screen here. If there's anything that we need to put in, let's go ahead and do so. If we hear from people, or we come back in a couple of weeks and we realize that after sleeping X amount of hours, we can come back and look at this. But I think that we have had this on the brain for a while now, and I think we need to move. Cuz I don't want this to come back, and then we have another discussion and another discussion. There's too much of that in other avenues of government. So, we just have to do the hard part now. Yes, Counselor Whitehead?
So, I would definitely advocate for keeping it simple and open to change as needed, rather than getting yourself into a box with 20,000 different exemptions or exceptions.
Because I'd like to remind us, when we passed earlier this year, the KSA and the PAC pause, that was conversations that we continued to keep coming back over and over again, and then we finally did it, um, and, and here we are. So, that is the point that I wanted to make with that. And again, we can always come back to it. Yes, Counselor Wiltz?
The, the, um, resolution references in Exhibit A, and, um, I'm able to open the packet. Is Exhibit A attached?
Exhibit A has not been formed, because that would be council identifying what departments are exempt, right?
So, that is something that, um... Okay, it says that council exempts the ongoing hiring processes.
Sorry, Exhibit A is, um, we had asked all the departments, what are your vacancies? Where are you at in the hiring process? All of that is included in the response packet from the department heads and elected officials. I, I did not form Exhibit A, because I don't know of the, out of the information council received, which, um, positions are far enough along in the hiring process that council would want to exempt them from the freeze. So, is posting a vacancy enough? Is, like, obviously, I would hope that offer extended and accepted gets you out, is exempted, but there, there's a range of, uh, steps that the departments are in between posting vacancy and sending an offer.
So, would it be okay? Yes.
Looking at the agenda, if you do not think that I am going to be instrumental on, in the next two discussions, I can pull this off my screen and start editing it and see if I get something by the end of the night. But the next discussion is about special purpose lit, and I think that I'm going to have to explain the lit process and what special purpose could be, uh, used for, so...
What is the point of, or, or the information there? I think Counselor Decker amended the agenda to continue to item 11, so we're not doing 10 at this point.
Right. So, technically, while we're talking about 11, you could be working on this.
I will start editing.
And we will go. All right, so moving right along, folks. Item number 11.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion regarding the possibility of creating a 2026 economic development lit budget.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Yeah, I think it's time for us to look at this. And so, um, the floor is open for people, and I'll go to Counselor Henry first.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Woodruff, are you able to display your three-year, uh, grid of the accumulations on the edit? This may help guide the conversation in terms of what we've been collecting as a county since the tax was imposed, and since the council last revisited how we're gonna use this lit. So, if we'll zoom in a little bit here, um, just to get a, a, a data set to work with.
Mr. Decker, uh, has this been emailed out to council?
I don't think so.
This was not emailed, this was a last-minute request that was thrown together.
11, the, the edit, okay. So, I just, and I appreciate, this was a 5 o'clock thing, so I appreciate back and forth and work here. So, what we have here, of course, are the receipts on the edit, month by month, since 2023. There are some expenditure lines, which I guess I have some questions about, because it predates my time on council, about when we have actually tapped the edit and used it. Uh, there is a, an expenditure of $272,000 in June 23. You have the running balance on the side, which has been accumulating in the pot. Let's scroll down a little to 24, we have two disbursements there. The accumulations continue. And then in 2025, and then we're seeing our September disbursement. Right now, it's September, we're looking at north of $20 million sitting in the lit, the edit right now. Now, I think my, my reason for wanting to get into this tonight is pretty simple. I think when the previous council talked about, and talked about, using edit for the purposes of developing the, um, Justice Center, at the time, the Justice Center was coming in around a budget of $120 million in hard costs. And, uh, we're well north of that now. There's also, of course, the changes with SEA 1. And, um, and this is something to consider, because, yeah, I, I, I wanna actually borrow gently and, and, and honor Counselor Decker's comments about the government bank at this point. This is the government bank of revenue coming in at $974,000 a month, and nothing coming out of it to do economic development in the county. Look at the anticipated for 2026. By December of '26, we will be sitting at $35.8 million in this account, and that almost buys you a convention center. Now, here's the thing, we know that we have revenue coming in every month. If we do tap this to start balancing our budget, it will accumulate and will catch back up. And it's clear that there have been disbursements out of this fund over the past three years, anyway. And maybe I can get some clarity about what those are from the auditor. But, but I think the numbers here tell a story, that we have a, a, a resource here, that as we are sweating bullets about cuts, there may be a way to put some of this money to use to do economic development at aviation, at parks, and some of the, the end. And I will add one more thing, too, not for tonight, but later, that we've had discussions about the bonds. And why we're, why are we borrowing money plus percentage to buy a street sweeper when I have the resource right here that will accumulate month after month? But, uh, Auditor Gregory, is there, do we have a data on the expenditures from this fund and what they were?
It was, um, debt service.
Okay.
So, um, that's all it was, and that large lump sum of $10 million and change, sorry, it's, um, not on my screen right now, was the payoff.
So, I would propose that where we are with our deficit would regenerate within five months, and, and would be nowhere near the principal that was, um, discussed by the council in its previous iteration. And again, I have yet to see an actual resolution or a vote that said, a vote that committed the edit to the, I, I can't find it. It may exist, but it was predating my time. But that's, that's some thoughts about where we could go with this resource. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Counselor Henry. Oh, my God.
I just, I just did the same thing to Counselor Henry, it's okay, it's late.
Yep, the other Henry, uh, Counselors.
The motion I read was to think about creating a budget for this fund. So, is the, the consideration here to build in twos and threes and fours and potentially ones, personnel services, uh, supplies and capital? Uh, what, or what, what was the thought behind the motion that I read? Is, is it to, are we going to be, I mean, are we creating the possibility of doing that? We did something similar in Rainy Day. So, what, what is, what is being proposed here? Especially considering that the spreadsheet before us has not been shared with council, and it was only produced at 5 o'clock today, which was the start of this meeting. What is being proposed here?
Oh, Madam President, may I?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I would say that the, the agenda item that I proposed did not verbatim get put into the agenda. The, it was not a discussion of a lit budget that I wanted to do. It was a discussion of using the lit, period. I mean, and so the, so the open-ended question is how? And so, it, so it was not, and so I understand that that's what has been published, but that was not what I submitted to leadership to be put here, but I, that's fine, we can work through it. So, the discussion is, you know, if, if we wanna amend that, or how it was addressed, is how to use this fund? Because it is sitting here. But that's, that's where I'll leave it open at this point.
Yeah. Counselor Hawke?
Yes. Auditor's table, what was advertised for?
I'll pull it up, I believe it's $2 million in each category. So, let me pull that up right now.
No, that's two, $2 million in...
In each category, so eight total.
It was a total of $8 million that was advertised?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Decker.
I appreciate Counselor Henry's comments and the, the chart that he's brought. And anybody that watches these meetings first, I'm very sorry that you do that, but no, they're very informational, but they were a call, I, I got pretty passionate on this one, given our previous plans. That said, any, any person in government who doesn't look at paths forward, and again, to draw, draw that analogy, tries to find your way towards the door in the dark to get there safely and not trip on the extension cords, as I said to Counselor Henry earlier today, that person is a wise person in government, as wise as one can be. When I look at the revenue, and I think about a shortfall right now, which is, seems to be hovering in the, I don't know, 293 kinda range, 2, 2527, I'm not sure, I'm thinking that, that this could be a path forward until the SEA 1 ship is ridged for its temporary permanent destination, if that means anything. So, I think that there are paths forward here for a, a, a small portion of these dollars, $2 million, um, as advertised, or, or, or so, to find a place. And I wanted to voice that, because I've been so vehement about all that, but we have options for reasons.
Counselor Whitehead?
So, I wasn't here, and I can play dumb. So, what are these monies designated for? What are the parameters the monies can be used for? I would like to get that on record again at this point. Look to Ms. Turner King to give us that information. What can the monies be used for in this economic development lit?
So, economic development lit is governed by Indiana Code 63610-2. There are 11, um, very specific uses, and I can read them all, but I think the most important one is number 11, that says, "For any lawful purpose for which money and any of its other funds may be used."
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Decker.
Just one quick comment. I mean, I, earlier today, I said to somebody, this is the route that the state ultimately has said, you'll all end up in this place as property taxes become things that we retire. And somebody quickly corrected me, and they said, no, they just wanna, they wanna cut, and then you just keep cutting alongside them. But the reality is, funds like these are where the state is pushing us in this measure towards these levels. So, counselors like us are gonna be stared more at this than not. The plan, I think, is for the state's options to not really hit us for a couple of years in this direction, but this county actually had action before then, as controversial as that was. These dollars are here.
Yes, Counselor Wiltz?
What, what ban was, what is the debt service specifically for? I can't remember.
It's okay, it was the 2022 bond anticipation note. I believe, um, it was specific for purchase of property. That's my recollection, I can find the bond documents for you.
So, that's when we said we could use this money to purchase land for the Justice Center? And so, a bond anticipatory note was issued? And now, we've had to pay debt service on that, having not purchased the land? Don't we look great? Fan-freaking-tastic, is that what all of those in the expenditure column are?
Yes, it's, um, either interest or principal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody, yes, Counselor Iverson?
So, it, it sounds like the plan... So it, it sounds like the plan for using these funds has gotten as far as advertising $2 million in each category. Has, have plans gone further? It, has, has anybody identified personnel lines to move into this, service lines, supply lines? I, I kind of feeling left out.
Nothing's been discussed, Counselor Iverson. We were, this is the discussion here.
Yeah, I, if I may, Madam President.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just echo that. So, um, you know, this is very much a public sausage-making activity at this point. The fact that the edit has been encumbered as a custom, because again, I don't find a resolution anywhere that was voted on, is sort of customary since it was given to the county by the, the city of Bloomington under the previous mayor. Um, we, you've all, you've all made a, verbalized its use for the Justice Center, right? I mean, I wanted to do this in public. I, I think the, to get to, this is the discussion piece to see what the temperature is. If there is positive temperature, then I think we have a good week or so to use what has been advertised, 2 million per category, to go figure out how to use this to close a deficit. Or we keep cutting, or we have a deficit budget. Or we cut COLA. I mean, this is where we are. Yeah, so, and, and it is hard, I think, to justify to the community this level of takings without letting it flow back into the economy, which is the design of the tax to begin with. That's, so yeah, Peter, with all respect, there's no secret meaning here. This, we're doing it right now. This is the discussion in, in public. I just wanted it on the agenda to get it out.
Anybody else have? Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
Just, just to be clear, we wouldn't have expenditures if we hadn't had a vote to approve the bond anticipatory note being issued. So there has been a vote that, that expressed intent to use this money for the Justice Center land, at the very least. I don't, I don't think that, that you're, you or I even are beholden to that at this point. But I just want to make it clear, it's not as though we've been spending on things without a public discussion and, and, you know, ill-advised as it might have been, I don't know. But I think you're making a very good point, and I, I appreciate you kind of getting the numbers in front of us, because that's a lot of money. And it's looking as though even with hoarding this money away, I, we can't afford the Justice Center as designed and presented to us. We could scrape together every penny from this and the corrections lit, and still, I don't know what we're planning to do unless something big changes. It does not give me that much heartburn to then turn and spend out of this fund, knowing, as you point out, that it is being replaced over time. And we've been, let it build up as we've been waiting.
Yeah, um, that is a very good point, and I do feel as though times have changed. Um, and I don't want to keep going back into those conversations. We know times have changed, which is why we're still sitting here talking about this budget. And so I, I think that, no, I don't think that we are ready, um, to be in the business of, uh, building a, a, a Justice Center, and I think we, we, we're a little bit away. And therefore, while we are still having this regenerate, why not tap into this? I will be honest, originally, at the first conversation of this being used, it gave me a little hiccup at the moment, because I really thought we could do some other stuff. But because we are still sitting here, and we got two weeks before we have the final adoption, um, as we had talked about earlier before we get to the other conversation, um, do we want to use this, or do we want to cut COLA? That's kind of the bottom line for me. Um, and I appreciate this being brought to the forefront. Um, and again, this also makes me realize that we, I see, Counselor Hawke, just a second. Um, like, uh, we're in a different day, and this is looking mighty appetizing right now. So that's why I'll say to that. I'll go to Counselor Hawke, and then I'll circle back to Iverson.
Okay, um, perhaps I've forgotten what the dollar amount was. How much is it for COLA? We don't, or do we, do we don't have that at the top of our minds, if that's what we think we're saying? We have to know.
Well, we had it built in. I, I, I want to be fair to the staff. Like, we had it built in because we couldn't have it built in, and then we'd be sitting here talking another long time, um, for that. So let's, yeah. I don't want to put too much pressure on, at staff, um, who's already working late nights, and I've seen the phone calls and the, and the messages. So let's not.
Well, one, one thing I'll just say, I mean, I'm going to look at the clock. It's 9:48 PM. In two hours and 12 minutes, your federal government will shut down, because a bunch of people wearing suits worth more than our budget cannot problem-solve to save their you-know-whats. We, on the other hand, have a lot of different thoughts here, and we are literally problem-solving this one step at a time. We've talked about postage stamps. We've talked about everything. We have literally made people get close to tears this evening. And there, one example that we're seeing here is that no philosophy, no plan, no thing is greater than trying to figure out how we make sure that deputy back there, those folks up there, and everybody else that needs a service tomorrow morning that cannot be up to watch gets what they need. Meanwhile, when they look at their headlines, our federal friends will be giving speeches on MSNBC and Fox. So problem-solving looks like that. Have I solved enough for you, Kim?
I'm going to go, Counselor Iverson has been bouncing in his seat and waving his hand at me. I'm going to go to Iverson, and then I'm going to go to Michelle.
All right, so it appears to me we have some next steps, uh, with this fund, and I want to try and enumerate some of those. Number one, because of FICA and perf concerns, we do not have a running total for how much we have cut tonight. We have to wait until tomorrow for those calculations to be done. That's unfortunate, but that's where we're at. So in terms of coming up with a plan to use the advertised dollars in this fund, we do have to wait until we know what those numbers are tomorrow, because we did move quite a bit out of the fours tonight into the bond. Uh, we did do a lot with some of the personnel lines, and, and that's going to, that, that's going to be impactful. So I think, starting tomorrow, it's going to be, we're going to need to have some pretty serious conversations about those categories that, that, that we've advertised, because I, I think it's premature to have much more of a conversation on this, this fund, because we're at the risk of not knowing the, the running total of what we did tonight.
Okay, so I, I dug around, and this is a COLA comparison that I prepared back in June. And this is, um, the top part here is the levy funds, then there was the rate controlled and everything. So, I mean, do you, do you want a bottom dollar kind of COLA? So which would be, you know, all of the funds kind of thing? It's, it would be that right there. So let me. This column.
Oh, yeah. Are you saying?
Yeah. So the difference from 2025 to 2026, salaries with the FICA and the perf is 2,477,169. That's FICA and perf. Salaries only is 2,000,000.032. Yeah, this is the total. This is the grand total difference.
What if you just did, um, the levy-controlled funds? It should be a million six about.
Yes.
And then the others, they could just take it from their existing budgets. But that's at a 3%.
That's at the 3%.
So we did like a 1.5%, which is another number that had been discussed very clearly when we first started with 3. We just said 3, because nobody gave us any numbers, and we just need to move on. But I know, I believe it was Councilmember Wiltz was suggesting 1.5%. And so what would it be if we had listened to her wise counsel back then? I'm not kidding.
It would be half that amount.
Where's my dunce?
Well, can we just cut it in half?
Whoop.
1.5, so 3 just be half.
Yeah, it's up here.
Call us the number.
Okay, so the grand total salary increase difference for the levy funds, 1,003,497,60. The grand, the, that was just the salary, sorry. The grand total that also includes FICA and perf is 1,644,683.
But what, doesn't make any sense if we, that was for 3. If we said 1.5, it would be 1.5 of the 1,600, it would be about 800,000?
Yes.
About?
And remind me again, what percentage is this?
This is at 3%.
3%.
I'm, I don't have, I, and I don't know why, but this is, this is flat, what I would call hard numbers. They're typed in, I, you know, probably copied and pasted it from somewhere. So I can't, like, change the percentage to see where it's at. I'd have to go back and reformulate, formulate stuff, so. That would, um, so, half of the grand total, so that's 2,000,000, um, 2,000,000.06. So that's the half of the 3.
We wouldn't do all of that. We wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's the grand total of all funds, because some of them are diversion, you know, some of them are the user fees, you know, that kind of thing, so. But if you give COLA to, you know, I mean, across, across the board, I mean, we, we, we give everybody the same salary grid, so.
No, it's just they, they could take it out of their existing funds. If they've got separate fund, it's not in the general fund, then they could just take their raise, which right now, it's already been projected as 3% in their budgets. If we reduced it 1.5, all of those budgets will then be reduced. And so because then you have less expenses, we're going to have less deficit.
Counselor Wiltz, did you have something that you wanted to add to that? I thought I heard you.
I had a question.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke, are you suggesting that, are, are we still talking about using ED lit, or have we moved on completely to only talking about COLA?
Nope, because we, the motion on the floor is, um, we were talking about ED lit so that we can get to COLA. And some, we went down this part here. Sorry.
Okay, the reason why, you might wonder why I'm saying, is because if we're saying, oh, yes, we're going to, to, we need to know what we plan to do with the 2%.
Right.
Okay, and that's the reason why I was looking at what is the COLA, and what would we be willing to put in there, because we're spending down a revenue that is going to be a part of the 1.2 come 2028. We, we cannot, whatever. I know what I think. So that's the reason why it's important for us to know what we're voting on.
Yep, that's what I thought you were talking about.
Yes, Counselor Henry.
I think, I want to honor what, um, Counselor Hawke just said there, too, because this is this year's version of this, as, as you are, as you just articulated with the incoming 1.2, and what, and, and of course, we've also had conversations with FSG about how much of the 1.2 would be obligated to the Justice Center, right? Because we've had that conversation, too. That this is this year. I mean, I don't think we would be visiting this path this way next year, with the instruments and the funding and the revenue that we're going to be seeing and how it comes in. So I, this is a, I don't, this isn't sustainable, because we, or I just flat-out can't do it this way again, and we can't do it this way again in two years either. So this is a moment in time about how we're using, I think, this fund. It's not going to be here. It's not going to be here.
But if you put it over there, you've increased the spending.
Right.
Over there, it's not going, the money's not going to suddenly, you know, increase enough so that we don't have to think about it.
I was not saying not to think about it, but it is, it, it is buying time with the resources we have. And then we're going to have a new, a new battlefield and a new battlefield. I think that's kind of my, my bad analogy at this hour, but yeah.
Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
Is it then appropriate to not look at the personnel costs for, you know, for ED lit? Like, just look at capital expenditures, so, because it's one-time? Or I guess you could say services if it's a one-time contract kind of thing? I mean, you could get into that, but it seems to me that this is best used for something, then, that isn't ongoing.
I, I, I agree with that. I mean, because ideally, I mean, we're talking about if we're doing capital investment, maybe I, I have that one time, I agree with that. I mean, this is not a sustainable use for salary. But what it is, is if we can move things around, and it's going to be a lot of work in the next week, to move those items into the edits, uh, so that we use the general fund for salaries, right? Because right now, we're kind of pulling from, I mean, I think, I think this is the way I'm seeing it right now, is pulling, the, pulling things out of the general fund into this to free up the space for personnel to be left alone. I, I have some heartburn about the personnel piece, but does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because I, I, not, not to belabor this, but I know other governments in proximity to this building have taken a different approach.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting that with us, yeah.
Yes, Counselor Deckard.
Well, based, based on the previous well-betted amendment earlier that I don't think we adopt, no, we did not adopt, we had a determination that there was, in this budget, total 3.863 in capital. And I guess the question would be, rather than do what we were saying, the 5% reduction in capital, we could take 2 million in, from that capital and put it into this? Am I saying something horrible?
Please speak. Yes, Auditor's Office, help us.
Now?
Yes.
Okay, you could do that, but it would not reduce the overall deficit. It would only reduce the deficit in the funds you're taking it from.
What if we just took it from the levy funds?
You would reduce the deficit in the levy funds, but you would not reduce the overall deficit across all funds. That's that simple calculation we were looking at.
Uh?
The simple calculation accounts for all funds, so if we're using the simple calculation to identify what the overall deficit is, then moving it from one fund to another would not reduce that number.
Yep, I thought I saw somebody waving at me over here. Okay, um, yeah, I, I just, so. I, I guess overall, the general consensus is that we think that we should... I, I guess overall, the general consensus is that we think that we should touch this. And then the next steps would be, I guess, that's what I'm trying to look at in terms of next steps. Um, yeah. Um, I just had a thought and it just lost my brain, or left. So is it something that, I feel like, is this not, we should probably have a general idea of what we are needing to do tonight with this particular thing, instead of coming back on the 14th, on the final adoption, or even want to put this out here. But until we know what we've done today from the auditors, or from the calculations that we should get tomorrow, is that something that we potentially possibly look at having one more meeting in between the final adoption? I'm trying to avoid it, but we got a lot of stuff that was thrown at us this evening, and for folks at the table over here to get us the, the numbers so we can figure out what we need to do here, maybe that is the better way of doing this. Yes, Michelle?
I would prefer that because trying to come back, give you good numbers, and then, I mean, at that, at the adoption meeting, we would have to be trying to amend things on the fly, having to pause so that you could, we could make changes and you would have to then redo salary, you know, the ordinances and that kind of thing. So in anticipation of that, I looked, October the 8th, the NatU Hill Room is available in the evening if you want to set a meeting for, October the 8th, that's Wednesday, October the 8th.
So basically, the Sophia Travis Committee people will be living in the county building for that week.
Yeah.
Because we got the meet-in, the grant presentation on the 7th, and then we have another meet-in.
On the 10th.
On the 10th, and so the 8th. Okay.
The only other time it's available is on the 13th, and I'd rather not wait till the day before.
And is that a holiday that's honored by the county? Because the 13th is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Oh, okay, nope.
I think so.
Okay, I will not be available because I will be out of town. So then, 8th at 5 would be an ideal, and let's keep it simple, let's keep the kiss method going here. So we come in, we do our sausage making, we figure out so that on the 14th, this will be a time for us to literally just kind of go through and do final adoption because we do not want to come here on the 14th and willy-dilly numbers on that particular time.
I, I would request that if you have ideas of what you want in edit, I mean, I can't do anything until you guys direct me, what do you want in there, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what, what are you looking at? Do you want, you know, are we moving things from the general fund? I, so I need some direction with regards to, what do you guys want to move? So.
So in that term, and so in that timeframe, in order to give you all the opportunity to get all information from all seven of us, if all seven of us should send that information, what would be a good timeframe before the 8th?
Oh, well, Friday the 3rd? Before the end of the day, Friday the 3rd?
So Counsel, we hear that Friday the 3rd, which is this upcoming Friday, gives us an opportunity to get information to Michelle and the Auditor's Office in terms of what we would like to see in edit. So I am putting us to task at the end of the day, Friday, October 3rd. That is your time to shine, and we need to come into this space on the 8th, ready to go, locked and loaded. Let's buzz out, put it all out.
Okay, so do you want, I'm, I'm just trying to think of the agenda ahead of time. What is, we wanting, do you want to be able to go back and review the hiring policy that she's been working on, you know, that kind of thing? Then also, is that it? The hiring policy? And then just revisiting numbers?
So let's revisit numbers because we know we'll have a clear picture for tomorrow. We'll have the hiring freeze because in all this conversation, I completely spaced, Ms. Tarnikin was working on that. So we can potentially have that. And because we have all the note in that we should be ready to go making that decision, and then the discussion of what we would like to see in ED Lit so that we can be prepared on the 14th. Does that sound okay for everybody? Does anybody have any objections? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
These folks need to know whether or not to include the raise or not to include the raise, whether they include 3%, one and a half percent, whatever.
I was getting there.
Give us a number. They're not going to just, they can't make these decisions. We have to make them. I'm sorry.
So that would be the other thing. With regards to the COLA, I need to, if you want to change that, I need to know an amount because then I have to go in and create a grid so that I know what number so that I can get, at least to give you an idea of how much is going, that difference is going to be. But I need, I need a number if that's what you're wanting me to do.
So that is a time for, like we said on Friday, when, whatever we want to think about in terms of ED Lit, that is also something that we can send to you as well with that. Does anybody else have any objections or any questions or comments on that? Yes.
So we're just individually sending her our thoughts on Friday. But we have to...
Raise has to be decided tonight before we leave here.
I don't know how they're going to have time to work on. The COLA, if we, if they're thinking that maybe the COLA should be less, which I don't know if that's the case, I have to do that sooner than next week.
Okay, so it, it's not hard to give you a number saying, this is how, you know, I can show you, this is how much it's going to cost at a 3%, this is how much it's going to cost at a 2, this is how much at a 1. But in order to get that done and changed in all of the last of, I'm going to have to open it up to the departments to edit some numbers or something somehow, because I will not be able to make all of those changes on my own.
Have to make a decision now.
I, I say we stay at 3%. There is, there's more than ample in edits. We've still, we've got a hiring freeze resolution that's edits have been made right now. It is, we, we are at the deadline. We do not have the time for our staff to keep going back to the drawing board, going to every single department.
Hang up until 1 o'clock in the morning, working on stuff, so.
We stay, my vote is to stay at 3% and find it elsewhere.
I'd love to say one and a half.
Okay.
Not three.
All right, so I'm going to put it out here. Counsel, I make a motion for us to say that we are going to go with a 3% COLA, and that is going to be the determined number that we are going to do so that we can try to get other numbers moving forward ahead of the next couple of weeks.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. 3% is what we've been talking about since the very beginning. We see that we have it in edit. I really, again, would like to keep us at the 3, but I know, because I can hear the whispers, that people don't think that. So this is our time to shine and say yea or nay. Let's go. What else do people think? Are people, I see head nods, I've heard a no. What, this is our time now that we can be silent, this is our time to speak. Yes, Counselor Iverson?
This is about integrity. We told, we told people that 3% is baked in, that's, this was, this was our, this was the thing that we were going to provide this year. This was the thing that we said we were going to do. This is about integrity for me. I'm a yes.
Counselor Fidel.
So I would be always in favor of more money for employees. However, I would like to know if it was baked in, what did, I know there was a letter that went out, and I don't have the language memorized that said there was 3%. Now, did the language say that is our hope, or what did that language say? That's real important of how we advertised we were thinking about that 3%. Right. Does somebody have?
I'm trying to pull that up now.
That's okay, and I tried to find it and I couldn't find it, I'm sorry.
Let me.
Because I know, I know you sent out a letter, and it is important of what it said, and I think that's what, you know, if people baked in something that wasn't really in the letter, that's a different story. But if, if we did promise that, that's a little different story for me.
But we didn't.
Okay, so in the President's letter, it says additionally, "Departments whose salaries are not set by the state will see a 3% COLA increase in all proposed 2026 salary grids, which will be distributed by the Council Office. When completing the salary requests for your proposed budget, please refer to those grids. The Council prioritizes our valuable employees and recognizes that a cost of living adjustment COLA is a vital consideration for both you and the loyal members of your department."
Thank you.
Yes.
That's not the whole letter. So can we put it on screen? I mean, because the, and I don't, this is important, if we're going to put it all on the table of this.
This is what employees were told.
So this isn't the whole part of the letter. We need to look at the supply services and capital category request part, the paragraph. If you can display the whole letter, it might be useful, and I'll read it while you're preparing it. By reducing your budget, you are also safeguarding the proposed COLA of 3% for all employees. It's in, it's in the letter. And so the caveat has always been, we need to make the cuts in supplies and everywhere else to attain the goal, and, and we're not there. And so, and as much as I, you know, and look, I'm, as much as I appreciate the target, what we're wrestling with is getting the, everything else in line here to preserve the COLA, but we're not there with the deficit. Now, if, if we are going to make proposed attempts to use the edits to fill, to, to cover other costs in the budget, sure. But I mean, the letter does also indicate to department heads, we have to safeguard this by making the cuts. Some really did the work, I want to honor that. Others, this has been a bit of a challenge. That's, that's all I have, President. But you have the letter up? Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay.
I wasn't sure where you were at, I couldn't.
Yeah, that's fine, I was just firing away, yeah, it's all right. Yeah, it's, it's that, it's that bullet, yeah, that's where we indicate that.
Counselor Deckard.
I, I appreciate those comments. I, we tried a different approach to COLA this year in budgeting that in. Some did make cuts early, some made lots of cuts here. Many have, many of us, we've continued to cut, cut, cut. I mean, we have, we have cut the bucket so much that there are times where the marginal errors then say, nope, it's another million more, you got to cut, nope, it's actually this. We've kept going. To me, the 3% in there has, we have been going after those cuts. Department heads have been going after those cuts. I mean, some of us, when we were sitting with liaison, some of us sitting with liaison ships that weren't even our own, and they were asking us for advice. We were helping them cut pre. So I, I think that, you know, did everyone do that to the same balance? No, but nobody ever does anything completely to the same balance. I think they've been chasing it, I think we're chasing it tonight. The thing I keep coming back to is a little bit of what Peter, Counselor Iverson said. That ED Lit, those dollars, the, the way that they are setting there, the ample amount that there's enough to pull just slightly from, to me, that gets you through this moment as you can, we continue to, continue to adjust. It helps us maintain the employees that we have. It helps us to provide the services for the things those folks do, and it gets us to the, to close to the end. I think we are actually closer than we think, thought, once these numbers start getting computed. But I, we have pulled longevity out this evening. We've done a lot. We're talking about a hiring freeze. This has been the most menacing this council has been since the 2010 to 2012 era. And friends, I'll tell you, one thing is, the era, we're still paying the prices from some of the rhetoric of that era. I mean, it was one of the, in 2019, some of the first liaison ship discussions I heard were from that era. So while I, I get, yes, it'd be lovely to continue to cut, 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 I do think that there's a point where you got to be cautious about that employee line. Because many years ago, we were, our rhetoric on our people was awful. And I know because I heard it as a child, a county employee, and it was awful. And we, we need that workforce because we're not at that counter. So to me, we would hold the line at this and continue, and continue down the path. And those edit funds are part of it, some other solution will be too. We will continue to do it. It'll be a new thing every 20 minutes around here till we get it all figured out.
So we got a motion, there was a second to keep it at 3. We can move forward here again, as protocol. If you've got public comment on this item, come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room, if you're still here watching us in person, or you can raise your hand via Teams. All right, and seeing none, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
No.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority, 4 to 3.
So Counsel, staff will proceed for with the 3%.
Thank you.
Okay, um, what else we got on this thing?
Better the next agenda item?
Yes.
All right, due to Counselor Deckard's motion, I'm going to go back to item number 10. After that, we still need to go back to the additional 2026 budget reductions. So we still have two more agenda items. Yep. Number 10, "Council, I move to open for discussion regarding the possibility of increasing lit special purpose tax for 2026." Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. I'm just going to go on the record, as I said it before, I'm not interested, nor am I okay with doing the special purpose tax. I definitely think it's something for us to look into this for the following year. But increasing the lit, by doing this right now, after going through all that we've gone through this evening, I, yeah. So that's just my take, but I'm willing to have other people give their take. And Counselor Henry, you're up next.
Thank you. This was an item I had requested to be discussed this evening. I, some of this may be, Madam President, I agree, may be overcome by events because we've had a lot of discussion about other instruments at our disposal here. I am only raising this back up because, trying to evaluate all the things we have at our fingertips to, to get to a balanced budget. I don't need to remind the counselors that were sitting here before I was sitting here, that the, the lowering of the special purpose lit for juvenile services from the .085 to the .03 was an action you all took in the development of the jail corrections lit, with the idea that it was a temporary reduction to eventually be increased. And so I think, if anything, it's really just revisiting that that was a, and a, a, a concept that was floated at the development of that lit relative, again, to the criminal justice, or the Justice Center. And to keep it, you know, at the tips of our tongues is something that, if it needs to be revisited, you, I think we just heard an indication that maybe it's another year on this. But I think it's worth raising, given the budget cycle we're facing, the budget cycles we are facing in the future about preserving juvenile services, particularly because we know it's a dedicated lit. But I'm, it's not, again, one way or another advocating the raise of that, or lowering of that that happened before my time here, but it is one of the tools in the toolkit that need to be at least surfaced in, in terms of the temperature of the body to consider raising again.
Yes, Counselor Hawke.
Right, in anticipation of this evening, I had asked to have this, so I just had to look it up myself. I thought, okay, quit waiting on somebody else, do you? Do your...just do it. When you look at Indiana Code 6-3.6-7-16, which is for Monroe County Special Purpose, additional rate to fund the operation and maintenance of a juvenile detention center or facilities providing juvenile services. The very last paragraph there says, "Revenues raised from a tax imposed under this section may be used only to fund the operation and maintenance of a juvenile detention center and other facilities to provide juvenile services." So that means we can do a detention center, which we had pledged...we don't. That's not our priority. And the other facility is our shelter. So for any reason, if somebody thinks that they can start moving expenses over into this fund that is strictly for juvenile services, I'm going to yell bloody murder all the way to the state because this is for the kids. This is not for somebody else's fund to move operations or extra insurance or whatever into. But I will happily support taking them back to the rate that they need so that our youth shelter can operate, and they don't have to worry about they're going to be able to make payroll. But I want to remind you that, to begin with, our juvenile probation officers were not supposed to be included in this. And because they were included in the welfare budget, we had four juvenile probation officers in the welfare budget. But when the welfare was taken over by the state, and they said, no, no, we're not going to cover those because we shouldn't have to begin with. We were pulling something to get them covered. And so I met with Steve Galvin out in the hallway, and I said, well, let's look at this legislation. Well, it says if we do services for this facility. And so in some of the other counties we had visited, the probation officers worked right there in their facility. And I said, I think we could cover these if they're working there in the facility. Well, now from four, it's gone to 10. And it's very expensive, and they're not operating in our facility. But I don't object to them going, you know, whatever. But I don't want them to think that they're in charge of this money because this money is for the kids. I feel strongly about that, and I hope that you do as well.
I'm going to look to the auditor's office for help on this because my understanding is, maybe right now for '26, that we have a pretty decent balance in there. However, for next year, for '27, this is something that we need to keep in the forefront and maybe not necessarily something that we need to do as of right now. Am I correct on that?
Yes, we provided the analysis. That was the consensus. Like, we need to revisit it. It's trending down. However, Carly's pulling information now to share more detail. Got it. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
You might also want to look at it instead of raising it back up where it was because that was allowing them...not them. I mean, it was growing funds for millions more than what was needed. So rather than replace it back up to where it was, maybe just another smaller percent and do it, you know, gradually as it might be needed. But that's always been a very healthy budget because income taxes have been traditionally going way up.
And as he has displayed on the screen.
We have the 4B pulled up for this fund, and we do show a projection of this fund ending 2026 with 1.152 million. Obviously, that's not comfort level, but it's definitely not zero.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So we heard from folks over here. Does anybody else over here have any questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
So I...I've spoken about this before. I think that we should increase the lit special purpose this year in anticipation of changes across all kinds of lit in the future. And I think this is a good time to do this in addition to the idea that the trend is downward on the balance in that fund. I know that's not a super strong argument. I, you know, I mean, it is not unhealthy. It's, like you said, the auditor said it's not where you might want it. But we certainly can implement the levy at some future point. Doing it now, though, prevents us from getting backed into, oh, my gosh, you know, Youth Services Bureau needs a new whatever, and, you know, we don't have the money to pay for it. You know, we have to go to a bond or something like that. I mean, traditionally, that's kind of how this has worked. I also...I have mentioned using this for expanded services for...specifically for youth. I wasn't ever...I don't know. Because you keep mentioning, Counselor Hawke, about spending it, moving it to other things. That's never been my intent at all. But I have thought that, you know, with the health of this revenue source, that providing other youth services might be appropriate. But that requires looking at the legislation much more closely than I have as of yet. But I digress. I think we should increase it, if not the whole way, a little bit because I think that the timing is appropriate, given what's going on with property taxes and then ultimately income taxes in the future likely.
Cut it by...what was it? We cut it by the percent?
I don't remember. What was the...
I keep thinking it was like .2, but that...
That sounds right, but that doesn't...it's a point. What was the cut? Okay.
Anybody else have...as we're pulling that information, what is your thoughts on this information?
Okay, I have it right here. Jeff McKinnon. .085%. We cut it to .030%. So... Let's say if you took it back up some, but not back up to the .085. Because if you remember, when we took it to the .085 to begin with, which was a major jump, and they said then, well, if that's bringing in more money than what you need, then you could just go in there and reduce it. We never did. We just let it grow, and it was sitting there with several million. So I'm not objecting to making them whole. They just don't need to be sitting there with millions.
So remind me, who is paying for this? Who pays this lit?
Oh, everybody who lives there.
Right. So anybody who makes income gets charged whatever this percentage is. Is that true? Okay. Thank you. And live and work...well, work in Monroe, right? Or if they live...
Live.
Live in Monroe. Okay. But if they live in Monroe and work in Indy, they still get paid? They have to do the lit?
I can hear you.
Okay, so it's based on where you live, not where you work?
Exactly.
Okay.
So because this is a discussion, and there is no motion for anything, looking at y'all to figure out if there is an appetite to do...
We can add it to the eighth discussion since we're already...I mean, if...
Only thing I would caution is there's an entire process to change the local income tax, which requires a public hearing, 10 days' notice before the hearing. And if you want it to go into effect for January, that entire process has to be completed by October 31st. So I don't know that a discussion on the eighth gives you time to complete that process.
Let me ask her a question. If we were to do it, say, in January or February, when would it be collected?
So if you pass it between September 1st to October 31st, January 1st is the effective collection date. And I think if you pass it November 1st to December 31st, the collection date becomes October 1st of the preceding year.
Following you. Following.
Following you. Yes.
So we would technically collect it October 26. Is that...
Yes. Correct.
Yes. What if we waited till January? Would it still happen in '26? Or are you saying that...
I think it would be in '27.
'27. Okay.
Thanks.
So again, it's 10:34. And I'm not saying anything about time. I'm just saying it's 10:34, and this is just a discussion. And we...again, if this is something that somebody wants to go forward on, I personally think what's it more than to, you know, talk about this now and to act on this now? Otherwise, we are cutting everything close at the end of October. So...
Correction?
I'm going to say if people aren't making a motion, then I think that's a conversation that is ceased, and that is something that we need to think about in the forefront going for next year. So, all right.
Pursuant to Councilman Deckard's motion, we are now going back to the additional 2026 budget reductions.
Is there anybody that would like to make any other type of reductions? Please make a comment. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
I don't have another reduction, but I also, if there are no other comments on this line item, I'm wondering if we need to revisit the draft of the temporary hiring freeze this evening.
Can we table this item till next week?
The reduction item? The 2026 reduction item?
Is that...
Sure.
Necessary or reasonable?
I don't have anything else. This was...I put that on there in case you guys had more reductions that you wanted to do that didn't come to me. So this was like a totally...just in case.
Hates me.
So again, because...
I don't care.
I personally don't...like, if we're going to have another reduction, then we probably should talk about it now. Otherwise, we're going to look into building a long agenda for the eighth and possibly kicking other stuff down the road until the 14th. And I don't want to do that. And I don't think we want to do that either.
Have to talk about it on the eighth?
I think if we have, in order to give...if people go home now and will think about what we've done today, plus we can figure out, you know, the numbers of the movement of things now. Some people might want to have a discussion of it. But again, whatever we...I would hope that whatever we do now, we get ourselves ready for the eighth. So by the 14th, it's all good. So, I mean, we can add it to the eighth. But again, we're making that longer, and we're also making staff do more things longer as well, too. So again, anybody got any reductions for 2026? All right. So seeing none, do...we'll come back to the draft of the hiring freeze. Yes, Counselor Fiedel.
So the hiring freeze is what you want to talk about now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, because I know we were saying that we wanted to go through and look at the draft that Ms. Turner King was looking at. I mean, we can look at it. But again, that's something that we can also push to the eighth as well, too. If that is the will of all seven of us still sitting here having that conversation, let's talk about it. Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
I think it needs work, but I'm in favor of implementing it right away. The main thing that needs to maybe be tweaked tonight is that Exhibit A part because we need to give people actively hiring some guidance. Like, where in the process are they to stop?
Ms. Turner King?
Do you...okay. For point of clarity, which is weird that I'm asking for it, do you want me to display the original resolution or the draft resolution that I just made?
I would think the one that you just made that you were working on, the most up to date.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
We'll go from there. Maybe I drafted it...maybe I made it better. I don't know. I didn't touch any of the whereas clauses.
Excellent. Good work.
So it says, "Upon passage of this resolution, the council immediately implements a hiring freeze on all full and part-time staff positions within Monroe County Government. No elected official and/or department head shall hire full-time or part-time staff without receiving advanced written approval and..." Or it'll say, "Without receiving written approval and permission from the council, which must occur during a notice public meeting. The hiring freeze applies to all departments and all positions, including transfers within positions, within departments, and between departments." Just to be clear, no department is exempt from said hiring freeze. Two, I added, was the process for elected officials and/or department head to request to hire a position, hire and/or transfer into a position as an exemption to this resolution. So in the event that an elected official and/or department head wishes to request to hire a position or make a transfer as an exemption to this resolution, the elected official and/or department head shall be responsible for informing the council administrator in writing that they wish to fill a position and/or make the transfer. Said request can be submitted via email to the council office, kind of like we do vacancies right now. The council administrator will immediately forward to the elected official and/or department head's request to the entire council and Employee Services Administrator. If the council wishes or requests to discuss at a public meeting of the council the possibility of allowing the elected official and/or department head to continue with the hiring and/or transfer of their requested position, provide an exemption to this resolution, then the council member shall notify the council administrator within 48 hours, exempting weekends and holidays, after the notice is sent. If no council member requests to discuss at a public meeting the possibility of allowing the elected official or department head to continue with the hiring of the requested position, underlined in bold, then the elected official or and/or department head shall not move forward with the hiring and/or transfer of the requested position as the hiring freeze would be applicable. So default, no, unless someone wants to talk about it. And then it talks about that if a person...if a department receives an exemption, they have to provide the council signature page to Employee Services to document that they were exempt. And then I... And then I didn't change this bit. It's if Employee Services or Council Office becomes aware that someone didn't follow this policy, that's the consequence. Resolution effective December 20, 31st of 2026. And then the resolution will be effective as the date of passage. However, council exempts the ongoing hiring processes as delineated below. And what I did was I went back and I looked through all of the department responses. And I listed them here. And so you can decide, you know, which ones you want to keep, which ones you don't. So, um, Airport Operations, they posted and received resumes. Internal Auditor, the position is posted and it's set to close on October 10th. Um, Commercial Building Inspector, they received permission to fill, posted it, but took it down because they didn't have, um, qualified applicants. These two, in all honesty, aren't, doesn't matter because they're already hired. So I'm gonna strike through those. Um, Health identified that there's a disease intervention specialist. Their job was posted on the 17th of this month. They're collecting applications and currently screening. Health Services Director posted on April 24th, and they extended an offer on the 15th, completing pre-hire steps, but I don't really know what that means. Same for the Administrative Assistant, posted in July, extended offer. Um, Highway said they anticipated having a truck driver in a part-time hourly line, but they didn't say when. The Public Defender has extended an offer with the applicant set to start on the 20th of Oc- over. The merit, or the Sheriff's Office identified two vacant mayor deputy positions, which they are actively recruiting for and accepting applications, um, in effort to begin a new selection process. There's a GIS Technician where they're conducting interviews. A Mortgage Deputy in the Treasurer's Office, offer extended and accepted. Support Technician, offer extended and accepted. Although TSD did not identify in their response that they have a full-time Support Technician, I think after they respond, they did submit a request to fill a vacancy. So I put Support Technician question mark.
Now, that was, well, like, within the last 48 hours, something like that.
And then YSB has a Clinical Coordinator, um, they're currently interviewing, but haven't extended office, offers. There's a Counselor at YSB and a Part-Time Direct Care Staff, which are all in the advertising process.
So some of those, like, beginning at H-I-N-J, I don't see departments, uh, correlated with the, like, for instance, in J, it says part-time hourly. What department is that?
It's Highway. So the Truck Driver and the Part-Time Hourly Line are both in Highway.
Okay. And then also H?
H is Health.
And how would we know that from this?
Uh, you, you wouldn't, but I can make that clarification.
So I would like clarification on which departments they're in, if that's possible.
But then the question is, do you wanna keep the list as is? My suggestion would be, like, for Support Technician Part-Time, if an offer has been extended and accepted, and same thing for the Public Defenders, it seems like they're through the process.
Yes.
I would take them off, but that's just me.
What's the, what's the lead-in? All right. What's the lead-in to the list?
A, B, C, is that what you're talking about?
No, I mean, what does it say the list is?
Oh, that the council exempts the ongoing hiring process, processes as delineated below. So they're exempt and they can continue moving forward with the hiring of these positions. And I can clarify that.
Yes, Counselor Deckard.
Just for historical record, do you think it would be possible on 7 to add a slightly, exempts the ongoing hiring processes as deline- delineated, it's not my word, delineated below, something comma, which were underway during adoption? Just so that folks don't think that we just.
Yeah.
Christmas listed a few things that were cool. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other further talking points?
When you finish that, could you go down to the bottom of the list of the positions again? I just wanna see the bottom again, when you finish.
So to Counselor Deckard's request, it now, 7 says, uh, to be clear, this would allow for the elected official and/or department head to continue hiring the following positions. The positions were exempted as the hiring process had been initiated prior to the adoption of this resolution. And unfortunately, because of the page break, I don't know that there's a good way to get all of them on.
I think that's fine. I just wanna see the bottom of the exemptions now, because I missed some of that. I was.
I mean, K is an offer and accept it. Um, N is an offer and accept it, and O is an offer and accept it. And so it seems like those would, I, I would suggest considering making those exempt.
You mean taking them off the list?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, no, by exempt, I mean they would stay, because the list would be, these are the positions for which you're allowed to continue the process. And so like, when I marked out, well, those are already there. But if you take them off the list, it's saying the hiring freeze applies and you're to stop this process immediately.
See? Yes. Yeah.
Immediately is pretty strong.
It's, it's in the resolution now.
So the part-time hourly line in J, what, is that the Highway also?
Highway. It's Highway.
Okay.
And in looking at their response, there wasn't, um, any information that I saw beyond that.
I'm just, the department, I think, is enough. And then go on down past L. Thank you.
Okay, um, so seeing what we see here, is there other discussion that needs to be added to this? Or are y'all wanting to punt this to the 8th? Yes, Counselor Iverson.
I like what's on the screen, and I would counsel move to approve Resolution 2025-42.
So do you, for clarity, by approving this, you're not editing that list at all? We're just leaving A through S?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second on that item. Um, is there any other further discussion? Yes, Counselor Iverson.
I think it bears to say, and I know we still have quite a few people watching in this late hour, this is the, in the same category as longevity with me, this is not done with any type of joy. This is done with a heavy heart. These are really difficult times. This is one of those difficult decisions that we have to make. And I, I just, you know, I, I think, I wanna make it really clear that we are doing everything we can right now to make sure that this community stays strong. And I, I just, we are doing our very best here. So thank you for understanding.
Yes, Ms. Turner King.
I would suggest taking D and E out for clarity, because those positions have already started. So they're, they're not in the hiring process. They're, they're through the hiring process.
Oh.
I, I agree. I, there you go.
Okay.
And if council's okay with it, I would like to clean up, um, A through Q now, uh, just to identify the department and the position and probably add the account line or some other identifying mechanism, um, and, and take out where we are in the hiring process, because I don't think it needs to be included.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think that, I consent with that in my motion.
So the motion is to adopt this with the contingency that I'm cleaning up A through Q and putting it in some formal.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Um, all right. And so if there is any other further question or comment on this item, um, anybody?
Bueller.
Passage.
Um, all right. I guess we gotta go to public comment on this item. Um, if there's public comment on this item and you're still watching, uh, you can raise your hand via Teams. And seeing none, can we please have a roll call go? Oh, sorry. Okay, okay. Um, all right. We got a hand raised. You, please unmute yourselves, state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, this is Kelly Whitmer. I'm the Director, Monroe County Parks and Recreation. I just want a clarification. We have after-school recreation staff that is in the process of being hired, and they're going through criminal background checks. I don't know where they land on that list of yours. That's all I, I guess that's, that's all I have to say. I mean, if, if we need to cancel after-school programs or day camp programs, I, we're gonna need to know soon.
Um, those positions are not included in the list that I had displayed in the resolution. Um, as I don't think they were mentioned in the parks response. Sorry, so I didn't know that the hiring process was ongoing.
Well, I, well, I, I thought we were already hired, but weren't. And we're picking up some more, um, after-school instructors and unfortunately, they're like 17 years old, so they have to put their parents to go and either get a notary for a criminal background check or actually take off work and go to the Sheriff's Department. So this has been quite a disaster, you know, week for us trying to get these, um, after-school kids hired. Um, and when I emailed you, Molly, I didn't realize that. And I didn't realize it would go to someone who worked four hours a week or maybe four weeks teaching basketball to kids.
Yes, for clarity, if council wants to include these in that list, how many employees are you talking about hiring for those after-school programs? Is it?
I mean, we're in the process. I mean, we're trying to get the pa- the paperwork is arduous. We're trying to get the paperwork through in the last two weeks. I mean, we're talking about maybe, I think we have maybe two more to hire. I don't know where they're headed. They've taken off work yet to get to the Sheriff's Department for the criminal background check or not. Um, I don't, I don't know if they made it there the day. I mean, this is how close we are of getting these kids hired. You know, if not, we need to tell the parents at Unionville that we need, you know, because without the staff, we, we can't have the program. So I need to know, basically, tonight, if we're having this program or not.
Okay. How many people do you normally hire to administer the program?
Jesus. I, I think we might have six, six counselors or six instructors. But most of them are all hired. We just have one or two. I'd have to call my, my athletic, I mean, sorry, my, um, Recreation Director to double-check where she's at in the hiring process. I mean, we're so close. We're almost at the finish line. I mean, I can follow your foot. We tell the people or the divisions.
Worst-case scenario, you have two options. You can include Parks counselors in this resolution now. Um, and I don't know how many, like, to put. Or, worst-case scenario, once you have more information, that could be emailed, the process is in place. Ms. Whitmer would email that request to Kim, and then it would go to full council if full council wishes to hear it.
Okay. Um, my only concern is, if we have this, are there other departments that potentially could be doing the same thing and missed a time where we were doing this? However, we are putting in something that says if they would like to not be exempt from, you know, the hiring freeze, then they can come to council, email, and go from there. So this is literally a test of who we're about to put in.
Forward, I, I, in the email that I sent to councils or to department heads and elected officials, it was pretty specific. And the first question was, do you have vacancies? Um, and then where are you at in the hiring process? I received, I think, 21 responses. And so, I mean, if they didn't respond, I don't know about them. And so I don't.
Yes, Counselor Willis.
I consider this a response. I mean, it, it, it's a clarification of the response that was given. Can we indicate that the on, the underway hiring of these seasonal employ- Parks employees? And you can edit as you see fit, just like you are with the other positions that don't have details, are on that list?
I mean, I'm happy to.
They're already getting background checks. That's pretty far along.
So then, it sounds like maybe somebody can amend the motion to include those two or however many positions there are with this. Again, we're doing this, and I understand this is a response. But I also understand if we're, you know, sending out emails and whatnot, and we don't get feedback back, then it's really hard for staff to do what they can. So I think at this time, maybe that's a motion or that's something that we can entertain where we can amend it. Yes.
Counsel, I'd like to move that the underlying resolution be amended under Exhibit A to include two additional, whatever that's called, camp, after-school coordinator, after-school coordinators from Parks.
Need a s- I, a second?
Hey, Karen.
Found the amendment. Oh, I didn't hear you.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second to amend. Is there any questions on the amendment? Yes, Counselor Fido.
So I like the amendment, but I'm concerned, I don't know the county, all the county employees that well yet. And I'm concerned about other seasonal employees, if there are any. So I don't know if there are any in the whole workforce. So I would like to include all seasonal employees, if that's the case. If not, then I'm fine with what they suggested.
But then I think the, to that point is, again, if people are, if we don't know, and it comes up again, that is on that particular elected slash department head to send the email. And then it's up to us to look at the email, respond to it, so that it can get bumped back into council for approval.
I just don't wanna miss it, in all fairness.
Yeah.
So I hope we can not miss those. Yeah.
I, I, I think it'll all be coming back over and over under this.
Um, yes, Counselor Willis.
This amendment doesn't apply to even the Parks seasonals. I mean, this is, we just added the ones that are currently in process. And they'll have a whole slew of folks that they'll have to come before us with. Yeah.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I, I just, I'm on the phone with my Recreation Director. She says we only have one employee who has all her paperwork in. She's supposed to start to work tomorrow. Her parents are supposed to go to the Sheriff's Department for the criminal background check. That's how close we are with that one employee.
Yes. I'm, I'm gonna go to Ms. Turner King.
Can I ask Ms. Whitmer a point of clarification? So are you saying you only needed an exemption to continue with the hiring process for one employee? Because.
One. Well, well, I'm, I'm on the phone, and she said everyone else has completed everything except one employee starts tomorrow, but her parents have to take off work to get to the Sheriff's Department in order to have a criminal background checked. She's like, how old is she? 17? She's 17 years old.
One, one, one position?
One person. She teaches at after-school. What sport? What sport? What sport? She's teaching flag football.
Okay.
And she's supposed to start tomorrow.
So. Is she starting before the background is complete?
No, no. Her parents are, her parents are get, her parents hopefully will get there in the morning, and she's hopefully to work in the afternoon. She's supposed to work in the afternoon, then in the morning.
Yes.
She's supposed to be there after school tomorrow. Her parents are supposed to be at the Sheriff's Department in the morning.
So couldn't we, just in the interest of time, just add this position that she's talking about and the, the other positions and kinda keep it moving? I, I, I feel like, again, we got the amendment that's on the floor here. I wanna remind us of that. So I, I would assume Counselor Deckard's amendment includes that position. So I would assume Counselor Deckard's amendment includes that position. And anything that's after that, once this goes into effect, should this pass, then this goes on to the department head to bring this back to council so that council, we get the email and we make do, and that's on us to bring it back.
All the question.
So I started, I just want to show you what I was doing while I was working through that. I started this, the chart to populate. So it'll say department head, title of the position. I'll work with Ms. Kim to do the account line. And then I added this other column, given this interesting park situation, to identify if it's a full-time, part-time, or seasonal position. And so I'm gonna populate that chart. The other quick question that came to mind, sorry, but some of these are pretty open. So, you know, I don't know when the Highway is going to have a vacancy for truck driver. I don't know when they're gonna start the process. Is this a blanket, go forth and hire? Or does like this exemption expire and then they have to follow the process after a certain? Because like, I don't know how quickly the sheriff's office will get a hiring process going.
It's just one truck driver, right? It's not like? Yeah. And that's why I'm wondering, do we limit it?
That's why I added the account line so that we could, but they said they anticipated being vacant. I don't know.
So again, we can maybe go back to the overall there. But the amendment is the two positions to add in right now. So I'm gonna go to that. All those in favor of Counselor Deckard's amendment as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Now we come back to the overall resolution. And now we can discuss whether or not there is a expiration for some of these positions that are listed. However, there is nothing in the pipeline for these. So then do we, November 1st be for those that are open?
That's what I was gonna suggest. December 1st, November 1st.
You know, it's tomorrow is October 1st. They got one month to figure it out. And then, just like Cinderella, it all turns into pumpkins, and then they can come back to council for that. All right.
Add a line up here. So in number seven, I added, this exemption grants departments until November 1st to hire and/or transfer into the positions below. If the vacancy remains after November 1st, the elected official and/or department head must engage in the process identified above. So if it's vacant after November 1st, send us an email.
Awesome. Okay. So I think we've exhausted this. But just in case anybody else has any other questions, does anybody have any questions or comments? Please God, no. All right. Public comment. All right. If you got a public comment on this item, if you're still here, please come forward to the lectern here in the net. You have to remember, raise your hand via teams. You'll have up to three minutes.
Yes, Ms. Turner King.
I received a clarifying question, and I don't have the answer to. When we say if the exemption grants departments until November 1st to hire, does that mean a person has to have started by November 1st? An offer has to be extended by November 1st? Like, what is the will of the council?
I'm thinking personally, I think the will for me is you have to be in the pipeline. That I'm thinking if November 1st come or comes, if we come to November 1st and that position is still open and there is no resumes, there is no, there's no action, then it's closed. But that's me. I don't know about anybody else feeling that same way.
So there has to be an accepted offer by November 1st? Or they just have to have resumes and be interviewing?
I think you have to have something in the pipeline.
I mean, all of these positions are already posted. So we are gonna have to be beyond like interviews or like?
I don't know. Say it. An offer extended?
Sure.
Just to get some sort of, I don't know.
Okay. My thought is offer extended because somewhat a start date is beyond the department head's control because now we're getting into whoever the applicant is accepting the position has to give notice to their current employer if they have one. And so offer extended by November 1st.
Offer extended. Okay.
To, I'm gonna put the exemption grants departments until November, oh, well, I'm just gonna read what I'm gonna type. This exemption grants departments until November 1st to extend an offer to hire and/or transfer into the positions below. If the vacancy remains after November 1st, the process as identified above governs.
Sounds like a plan. Does anybody have any other discussion on this? All right. May we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. So that's all the information that we have on this agenda for y'all tonight. Stay tuned to October 8th, and until then, we are adjourned. Thank you.